Hi, good evening. This is Tuesday, May 13th of 2014. This is our six o'clock meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First, we're going to pledge, have a pledge of allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we can just have a moment of silence, please. Okay. Just to make the announcement, according to the Massachusetts General Laws, Section 30A, excuse me, General Law 30A, Section 20E. If anybody else is recording this session other than Lorraine, our Secretary, and Elcat, would you please notify or say something? Are you recording? Okay, here, nobody else is recording. Hearing none, we'll proceed with our meeting today. Today, we have our interviews for our firefighters. At 6:05 is our first one, which will be Michael Minahan. We'd like to invite you up, Chief.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening. Did you want to give a little prelude of what we're doing here?
Yeah, we're in the process of interviewing four of our current call firefighters who have all shown an interest in a career firefighter position. Gary Severia is retiring after over 30 years with the East Long Meadow Fire Department. He's retiring in July. So, the goal this evening would be to choose someone out of these four, to get the physical, the PAT, and the academy scheduled within some diligence that we can, you know, he can start when Gary's done.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review all of their resumes?
Yep.
Okay. We have a few minutes. I believe a firefighter is out there, Mr. Minahan is out there. Would you like to call him, the candidate in? We're ready for him. Hello there, Mr. Minahan. Welcome. We're all going to ask you a series of questions. And I'll start out with, please introduce yourself to us, and why would you like to be an East Long Meadow firefighter? And what have you done to prepare yourself for this position?
Okay, my name's Michael Minahan, and I live in 77 Smith Avenue in town. I grew up in East Long Meadow. I did move away to Westfordville for a couple of years. And after getting on the Marine Corps, as soon as I could, I moved back. I love this town. I want to be a firefighter. I grew up around this fire department. My father was on the fire department from 1988 till 2007, when he passed away. And since that time, I got out of the Marine Corps, and I devoted a lot of my time, and most of that time till now, trying to get on. I went and got my bachelor's degree in management, and then I got my bachelor's degree in fire science as well. I've acquired my emergency medical technician certification, and I've continued that to paramedic level licensure. That's what I'm currently working on. To, could you repeat the question, the last part of the question?
Certainly, that's not a problem at all. Please introduce yourself to us, which you have done, and why would you like to be an East Long Meadow firefighter? And what have you done to prepare yourself for the position?
Okay. Like I said, East Long Meadow is my home. I love this town. I've been on the fire department for almost four years this year. I've been able to go to fires, car wrecks, you name it. I've been fortunate enough to been able to participate and help when needed. Emergency medical calls, I've been able to offer whatever expertise I do have in that field. Working as an EMT full-time now. But East Long Meadow is my home, and this is where I want to be, and this is where I plan on growing old and having my kids here. I have one child now, she's 17 months, so she's going to be growing up here, and my future children. To prepare for the position as a firefighter, like I said, I've gotten my degree. I attend academy classes through the fire department at the Mass Fire Academy as often as I can squeeze into my schedule. I've taken probably a dozen to 15 courses there. They range from an eight-hour day to two days over the weekend or during the week when I have time. And they range from rapid intervention teams to motor vehicle accidents, and what we do, to technical-related fields in fire service. I've taken online courses, probably 50-plus online courses, while I was deployed and at home, just to gain that little bit of knowledge that I probably couldn't have gained somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next question is yours, Seth McGorman.
Mike, what's the advantage of working in teams? And why is teamwork so important in the fire service?
To me, a team is a group of guys or girls from different backgrounds, different organizations that can work together as one cohesive unit. I learned all about teamwork in the Marine Corps. Playing baseball when I was a kid, you kind of learn, you know, teamwork. But in the Marines, I definitely learned that the guy to your left and right, behind you and in front of you, could save you someday or protect you from whatever may come your way. You're going to rely on them just as much as they're going to rely on you. So teamwork is huge, and it's the same in the fire service. Like I mentioned before, I took a rapid intervention course. Those are the guys that go in when a firefighter goes down. So, your adrenaline's pumping, you're ready to go in, and you have to make sure that you're going in as a four-person team. And you can't just run in and let them come in whenever they're ready. You have to go in together, you have to come out together. You have to work as one cohesive unit. Everybody has their own job, but overall, the job is finding that down firefighter. So, we train regularly on this. We actually have done four drills, the past four drills, on this one program. And it's helped build our fire department, to learn that aspect. Because we go to a lot of calls where we are the rapid intervention team for mutual aid in Summers, Wilberham, Springfield. So teamwork is very important, because your life someday could rely on the other members of that team, or a whole different team that has to come in, hopefully never have to save us, but it can happen. And the same goes for if we have a citizen in town that's trapped in a car or in a house, we have to work together as a team, put all our differences behind us, and go in together as one unit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, I also have a two-part question. What is the most appealing aspect of being a firefighter? And what is the least appealing aspect of being a firefighter?
I'll start with the most appealing to me. I had mentioned before, I grew up around the fire service. It is a family to me. Being able to work with some of your best friends is probably the best job in the world. I even look at it as a job. If I could do it for free, I would, but I don't think the wife would agree with that. I enjoy...
You'll agree.
I enjoy doing it, because the end goal is we're serving people. I was able to serve my country in the Marines, I love that. I was able, I'm in the Massachusetts Air National Guard now for seven years. I served my state. This is my opportunity to serve the town that I live in, people that I know. If I go to a house and I know those people, it not only helps them, but it helps me help them. And that, to me, is, it's very gratifying. And being an EMT now, I see that a lot more often when we do come here, or Wilberham, or Long Meadow, or Springfield. It's such a gratifying feeling, being able to help somebody on the worst day of their life, knowing that what you have learned, and sweat, and blood, and tears, and everything you've done to train for, be able to put it together within minutes and save somebody's life. The worst part, it's a tough one. I guess just the waiting. We train, we train, and we train for that big fire, that big motor vehicle accident. Hopefully, it never comes, but we train, and we train, and we train to use these skills that we acquire. And sometimes, it just never comes. But that's a good thing as well, because heaven forbid, it does happen. Hopefully, we are ready to show up and do what we've been training for all these years, and do our thing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, what personality traits do you possess that make you feel you would be a good firefighter?
In the Marines, I was very fortunate when I went in. It was in '03, we were building up rapidly for the war and ongoing wars. And I was able to advance, I was a sergeant when I got out. And when you're put in positions like that, I had 100 Marines under me when I was a platoon sergeant. So, you have to mold your personality to blend with everybody, regardless of who they were, their personalities. You had to provide leadership to them. After getting out of the Marines, I was fortunate enough in the same position. Worked for Home Depot. I started out as an hourly employee, and a year later, I was a salaried manager covering nine stores with 75 employees. It's the same exact thing. You have 75 different attitudes and behaviors, and you have to learn to provide them leadership so they can get their job done, but you also have to learn to listen. And I think that's the biggest thing, is people have their own lives, their own goals in life, and understanding them, and providing guidance and leadership when needed, or sometimes just an open ear.
Thank you.
Suppression, prevention, and public education. Rank them in order of importance in the fire service and explain your reasoning.
Okay, you said prevention, suppression, and public education?
Yep.
I could speak to East Long Meadow Fire Department. We do all three, obviously. Our public education is huge, so I would say that is definitely number one. Firefighter McCannish, Lieutenant McCannish now, teaches at all the schools during Fire Prevention Month for him. Sometimes, it's a month and a half or two months, we have a lot of schools. He teaches the kids ranging from kindergarten and up. And I've been fortunate enough to work with him on a couple of times when he needed extra help, going through the smokehouse that we have, teaching all the kids, they have thousands of questions, and one person can't answer them all. So, public education, when they're that young, is the best time and the most important. Second, I would say is fire prevention. Captain Cody on the department, he's our fire inspector, and he definitely heads that aspect of the service. He inspects all the buildings in town, residential and the buildings, and so does firefighter DePande. Our goal is to have no fires. We are actually pretty good at that goal. We don't have many fires, and that is an A+ for us. Because of our fire prevention and our fire education. Without that, we would probably have more fires. And then suppression. Suppression is what we firefighters, the privates on the department, train for the most. We're not there full-time, so the fire prevention, fire education is not as primary as a suppression aspect. And that's where we go in, and we put the fires out. We extricate people from the vehicles, and so on and so forth. So, I would say public education is definitely number one. Fire prevention is number two, and suppression is number three. Hopefully, we never have to get to that point.
Mike? When would you disobey an order?
When would I disobey an order? That's a tough one. The only time I would ever consider disobeying an order is, it's unsafe for myself or other people, especially the residents that people were trying to protect. Sometimes, in the heat of the moment, we have 100 things going on at once. I may get an order to run in the building and grab a puppy, but the whole building's on fire, but maybe that person didn't see that. I wouldn't necessarily disobey the order, but I would first check to clarify what the order was, because maybe I understood it wrong. If it was what I thought it was, I would advise the officer or the senior firefighter, what the situation is, what I see from my point of view, and that I feel that it's unsafe. And hopefully, together, in the heat of the moment, we can resolve that without just me saying, "I'm not going to do it." I don't think that's the right way to go about things. It goes back to the understanding different personalities. I think there's very rare moments where you need to disobey an order, especially from an officer, senior firefighter above.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, sir.
Pride and loyalty, define them and why they are important in the fire service.
Okay. For me, in my opinion, pride is something that, you take ownership of something. At our department, we have four different engines. We're all assigned to that engine. I'm fortunate enough to be training, on driver training on the engine that I'm assigned to, the one that my father was on for 20 years. And pride is taking ownership of that, making sure everything on that is working, making sure that the bay areas are clean, make sure that my equipment's working properly. If people have questions, if I can answer them, I will. If not, I can find somebody who can. That's taking pride in what you do, showing up in a clean uniform. When I come to driver training, I don't like to just come in my civilian clothes, which is, that's all that expected of us. I try to dress the part, I'll wear the pants, the coat, the shirts. Because to me, I'm a firefighter, and if I'm there during the day training, somebody shouldn't be able to tell the difference between me and the next guy. So, I try to take pride in that type of thing. Loyalty, to me, is, goes back to the teamwork aspect, is, I'm going to be the most loyal person to whoever is loyal to me as well. And who's got my back, I'm going to have their back. Whether we see eye to eye and everything or not, being loyal is knowing that if they're in a burning building, I'm going to go in that burning building and pull them out. And that goes for residents, that goes for fellow firefighters, anybody. Being loyal to the town is the biggest thing.
Thank you. Mike, where do you see the fire service going? How do you see it changing in the next five to 10 years?
Over the past couple of years, we've had a lot of changes. New leadership from the chief position and down, new officers. We've seen a lot of great change. Looking at the surrounding community, these communities, we see fire departments that have their own ambulances, fire departments like Springfield that respond to emergency medical calls, just as first responders. In theory, most fire departments are strategically placed within towns to respond immediately to any call within seven to eight minutes, at the very latest. And in our town, that is actually true. We're dead center, exactly where we need to be. So, I see emergency medical services as kind of the future of the fire service as a whole, and a great opportunity for East Long Meadow, whether it be owning an ambulance, or just responding as first responders, where you only need two firefighters or an engine company. Because sometimes, the ambulances get backed up, they can't make it there in time. We have plenty of guys in town that can respond to the station and to a scene within eight minutes. And if someone's, and being an EMT, I've seen this. If someone's in cardiac arrest, every second counts. Literally, every second counts. And if we get there in two minutes, and the ambulance shows up five or 10 minutes later, we probably could have saved that person's life. Especially if it's a child, it's respiratory. We need to get oxygen, and we need to clear the airway. Cardiac arrest, whereas more elderly patients with hearts, immediate CPR. I think we also have a great opportunity of teaching CPR to the residents. I'm in the process of trying to become a CPR instructor. And just being in paramedic school and being a full-time EMT, I see this daily. Heart problems are the biggest killer of everybody. And I think the fire service in other parts of the country and other parts of the county have taken that role on. And I think that's our opportunity five to 10 years from now.
Do you have any?
Thank you, sorry.
I didn't know if you were finished, I'm sorry.
No, I was, yeah, I was.
Okay, that's why I looked at you. And you kind of gave me a nod, so...
I was thinking about what I just wrote, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Do you have any questions for us? Or is there anything else that you'd like to add that you haven't covered already?
That's a good question. I think the questions are really good. I think I was able to express myself very well. Like I said, I'm a full-time EMT now. I respond to, unfortunately, I respond to 911s daily, and I get to see all different types of people in all different types of communities and environments. And I feel that has definitely prepared me for becoming a firefighter full-time in East Long Meadow. My bachelor's degree, my education, I learned a lot. Someday, I would hope to excel into the officer ranks. I'm definitely not ready yet, but hopefully, I will be in the future. My business degree, I have, I definitely have a business background where I'm hoping that can help as well. I'm good at crunching numbers, looking for opportunities to save, but also excel in different areas. And I appreciate the opportunity you guys have given me to take up your time here.
Is that it? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. Good seeing you again. Cheers, thank you.
So, we're just a little bit early, but is our next candidate Matt Tchukowski?
Terelski.
Terelski. Is he here? Do you guys need a minute to do any of your notes? Welcome.
Thank you.
Please, take a moment to introduce yourself. And why would you like to be an East Long Meadow firefighter? Would you tell us that? And what have you done to prepare yourself for this position?
Absolutely. Got involved with the fire service about a little over two years ago now. Always had an interest in public safety from a young age. Knew that I wanted to be involved in public service in some capacity, whether it was police, or fire, or EMS. Went to college after high school, got my criminal justice degree from HCC. Realized that the field of criminal justice is incredibly competitive, as is the fire department. Had the opportunity to get involved here in town with the fire department. Went through the fire academy and realized that it was, it was for me, I was hooked right away. I grew up in town, you know, I'm invested in the town. I want to help people in this town, and, you know, it's a great department. The fire academy taught me a lot, you know. It wasn't some, you know, thrown-together program, you know. It's Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. You went through, you know, the six-month program, and I learned everything about the fire service. And then coming back and applying that here, you know, I enjoy it, I truly do.
Matt, what is the advantage of working in teams? And why is teamwork so important in the fire service?
It's incredibly important, the fire service. Working in teams, whether it's in the fire service or any capacity, is incredibly important. You know, especially when you're in a team, everything is easier. Everyone takes, you know, part of the mission, and everyone has their own part. And you, you know, you apply, and you accomplish the task at hand, and the fire service is incredibly important. You have everyone from your officers, to your firefighters, to the firefighter that's driving the truck. You know, one of the most important jobs, you know. He, if it's an actual fire, he's responsible for getting, you know, the guys in the hose line water, and the officer's in charge, you know, of the guy in the truck, and the men that he has under his command. And working in teams is incredibly important. Everyone comes together, does their part. You know, if you don't work as a team, especially in the fire service, you know, you won't accomplish the tasks, it's impossible. So, it's incredibly important.
Thanks, thanks, Matt.
Okay, Matt, this is a two-part question also. What is the most appealing aspect of being a firefighter? And what is the least appealing aspect of being a firefighter?
The most appealing for me is helping people, especially being in the capacity I am now. You know, I grew up in this town, you know, I know a lot of the residents. You know, showing up at someone's house, you might realize, oh, you know, you know them from anywhere, and, you know, being able to help them, you know, on a, you know, a level where they're calling you for help. You know, I want to help people when something's wrong, or when someone needs something, I want to be the one to respond and help them. It's something I really care about, and especially growing up in town. You know, like I said, it's, you know, helping people that you grew up around. And that's important to me. And, you know, there's pros and cons to every job, and perhaps being in any aspect of public safety. You know, we're going to see people, sometimes on the, perhaps the worst day of their life, whether it's a house fire, a car accident, or, you know, any number of the things, incidents that we respond to. You know, it's tough to deal with. You know, you're seeing people that are, you know, might be losing every possession they've ever had in their entire life, you know. But in a way, you're there in a positive aspect, because you're there to help them, you know, in any way that you can. But it certainly can be difficult.
Thank you. Matt, what personality traits do you possess that make you feel you would be a good firefighter?
I'm a dedicated, hard-working individual. When I first got involved with the fire service, you know, I didn't just give it 100%, I gave it 120%. You know, I didn't, I didn't do the bare minimum. I always went above and beyond. And, you know, one thing that you learn there is, you know, the bare minimum won't cut it. You always want to go above and beyond. And, you know, I try and make myself, you know, a very well-rounded firefighter, not just, you know, just being trained in fire service, but, you know, I went and got my EMT certification. And that makes me a better firefighter. I know not only, you know, how to handle fire incidents, but now, you know, anything from fire incidents to medical emergencies, you know, it's important to know.
Okay. Suppression, prevention, public education. Rank them in order of importance in the fire service and explain your reasoning.
Sure. First off, education, definitely. If you don't educate people, you know, the number one, you know, cause of any emergency incident is because people are uneducated, whether they're doing an unsafe practice, they might be doing, you know, a number of things. If they're educated on, you know, not to do something, you know, the likelihood that they're going to do it is going to be, you know, far, far less. The next certainly being, the education first, prevention being second. You know, when we go into a building, you know, whether it's for a routine call, a CO alarm, if we see something that's unsafe, you know, we're going to take note of it, make a mention to, you know, whoever is there to take care of the issue so it doesn't become an incident, you know, where we have to go and, you know, God forbid, put out a fire. You know, if we can, you know, stop something before it becomes an incident, you know, that's what we want. So, suppression being last, you know, if we're getting to that point, you know, somewhere along the lines, you know, if we could have educated someone or, you know, stopped something, you know, it's important that we do so.
Thank you.
Matt, when would you disobey an order?
In the fire service, it's incredibly important to obey orders, you know, especially in my capacity as a firefighter. You know, there are men on the job now that are, you know, that are officers or even senior firefighters, have a lot more experience than me. So, you know, I'm in no, you know, capacity to disobey an order. The only extreme case I can foresee, or not even foresee, just, you know, if it ever happened, would be an issue of safety. You know, if it was something that an officer said, you know, "Oh, go over there," and you're walking there, and you see, you know, a downed power line. Perhaps he didn't see that, you know. So, to not go over there and put yourself at risk, or to put someone else at risk, you know, that would be the only extreme circumstance. But other than that, you know, it wouldn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Matt, pride and loyalty, define them and why they are important in the fire service.
Public service and fire service especially, you know, loyalty and pride come hand in hand. When you help other people, you know, it's, you feel prideful when you help other people. You know, when you go to work every day, you put on a uniform, you're part of a team. You know, it's, it makes you feel good about going to work. It's, you know, it's, it's a different type of work when you, you know, you go to work, everyone's there to accomplish the same goal. You all want to help people. You all want to, you know, do something for somebody else. And if that's, you know, perhaps risking your life, or doing, putting yourself in an unsafe situation to help someone else, it's part of the job. But those are absolutely two traits that come right along with the fire service in any public service in general.
Thank you. Matt, where do you see the fire service going? And how do you see it changing in the next five to 10 years?
The next five to 10 years, you know, I see the fire service, it evolves like anything else, just like technology. The fire service is a, technology plays a huge role in fire service. You know, from equipment, from safety equipment, from the apparatus, the tools that we use. It's always evolving. You know, it seems like as soon as, you know, it's like computers. As soon as something comes out, you get the latest and greatest. The next year, it's, you know, there's something better than that. And, you know, it definitely has its pros and cons. You know, better fire service, better fire protection for not only the firefighters, but for building codes, you know, they're ever-changing. Buildings now aren't made of wood, and, you know, they're not nearly as combustible as they were. So, I see the fire service in five to 10 years. You know, the number of actual fire incidents, I can say, I think will strongly decrease. But I think there will always be a need for, you know, firefighters and emergency service personnel.
All right. Matt, do you have any questions for us? Or is there anything else that you'd like to add that you haven't said, that you haven't already covered?
No, thank you.
Nothing? Okay, well then, that completes it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you again. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and let's. Yeah? Okay. Everybody set? Okay. Uh, John, and how are you saying that last name?
Capello.
Uh, Capello.
Capello.
Capello. See, that's what I would've said, that's why I asked the chief. That's all right.
He was harking back on my Italian here.
Okay. Oh, go ahead and welcome him in now.
So much for harking back.
That's all right, it happens to the best of us.
Hey, do you want me? Thank you.
John, please introduce yourself to us and why would you, and tell, explain to us why you would like to be an Islam metal firefighter? And tell us what you've done to prepare yourself for this position.
Well, my name's, uh, John Capello. I've been, uh, I've been on Islam metal fire department on call since two thousand and two. I have resided in Islam metal all my life.
Okay.
I started out with the, uh, Islam metal fire explorer post. Where we learned, um, hands-on basic knowledge of what it's like to be a firefighter.
Okay.
From there that intrigued me a little more. I, my senior year in high school, I did a, uh, job shadow with the career firefighters during the day. And I would, learned basic knowledge of the day-to-day operations of what they do. And they showed me different scenarios throughout the day. From there, I, um, went on and got a associate's degree in fire science. And then I had the opportunity to apply for a position opening up on the fire department as an on-call firefighter.
Okay.
And I went through the training program, I'm, got certified fire number one, two. And I'm currently, I'm still in a fire, on a call department. And I feel that going through the, uh, training twice a month through the fire department provides me knowledge. Talking to officers, senior firefighters of new ways, uh, to learn different situations if you have to go to a call. Why I like to be a firefighter is knowing that I'm helping someone. It might not be tonight, it could be next week, it could be a month, but some way or a form, it might not even be in this town, a mutually call. I could potentially affect someone's life, big or small.
Thank you.
John, what is the advantage of working in teams? And why is it, is teamwork so important in the fire service?
It's very important to work in teams, 'cause one person, being on the fire department, or not even on the fire department, you can only do so much. They say it's, some, some sports players are the, uh, you know, the best sports players that they've ever lived. They say Michael Jordan's the best player, but even he couldn't do without a team. And being a firefighter myself, I couldn't be, I couldn't do without a fellow member right beside me as a member. I feel that if you don't trust and rely on your members on the fire department, and if you don't rely on your senior officers, chief, the knowledge and know-how of who's been on and, who's been on and how they teach you certain things. And understanding that training is very important to learn, you know, day-to-day basic knowledge of when you go to a call. 'Cause I could be possibly a officer of a fire engine one day and I would have to know the know-how of what to do for a scenario.
Thank you. John, what is the most appealing aspect of being a firefighter? And what is the least appealing aspect of being a firefighter?
The most appearing, appealing aspect of being a firefighter is. I would say knowing that I'm with a great group of guys who all care for helping their, uh, their town. For instance, I remember a few years ago when we had the, um, October stormstorm and we lost power for a couple of days. And we were going to, uh, a bunch of calls and a lot of residents, everyone was buying generators and a lot of residents wasn't sure how to use a generator or where they would place them. And it was really knowledgeable and nice to knowing that I was possibly helping a family with their, um, the situation. And it was pretty, uh, it was eye, very eye-opening for me when we had that. The least appealing of being a firefighter is honestly, you know, probably during winter when you go, you get a call at two or three in the morning. Yeah, it's, it's tough, it's hard. But guy, you do it, most guys, some guys do it. And there's a reason why you do it, the call could be tiny, it could be, uh, a big call, it could be a mutually call. But you signed up for it and that's one of those things that is, is the least appealing, but you gotta do it.
Thank you.
John, what personality traits do you possess that make you feel you'd be a good firefighter?
My personality traits I feel I'd be a good firefighter is, in my current position, um, I'm a manager for Friendly's. I am a leader, I feel that in certain aspects, I can and could bring knowledge to the fire department. To learn how to, uh, show guys how to, uh, respect one another, how to lead one another, even if someone's new. 'Cause you have to work together to prepare for a certain incident. And as a leader, you gotta trust in that person that they know what they're talking about.
Thank you.
Give me one minute.
Yep.
John. Suppression, prevention, and public education. Rank them in order of importance and explain your reasoning.
Um, I will say, my first pick would be prevention. Reason being, I think it's the, uh, homeowner has their responsibility to make sure their smoke detectors are working in their house, carbon monoxide detectors. And they have fire extinguishers, make sure that they are charged. And I, I know also that the fire department has a great prevention program where they go to the town businesses and make sure they're up to code. I know they do it at Friendly's, I've been there when they've done it, and they go through and they, uh, go right through the inspection form, if something's missing, we fix it right away. I think number, at number two, I, public education would be number two. It's very important for the public to know what the fire department does and why they're doing it. They have a great program for the children, for the safe trailer, I've done it a handful of times over the years. And it's a great knowledge to learn, and you're teaching children how to get out of a house if there's a fire or there's smoke in the house. And that being, that being said. You know, education is probably the most important. And suppression, I would say was number three, because if there wa- when there is a situation, small or big, was it something that us as the fire department could've prevented more? Learn more, train more for the resident. Uh, obviously there's gonna be a scenario where it's some, it's gonna be out of our hands, but in most cases, the question is, could we possibly done more to, to prevent that situation from occurring?
Thank you.
John, when would you disob- uh, disobey an order?
When would I disobey an order?
Yeah.
I feel if, I think it would depend on the situation. If I felt that my life was in a dangerous situation, I would go to the, uh, senior firefighters in charge or officer. And I would say I don't feel comfortable by what you just asked me to do, I feel that my life could be in a possible danger. And. If the, a senior firefighter officer felt that I was overreacting, possibly go to the next person charged, which would be the deputy or chief. Again, depending on what the situation is, uh, if it's possibly, you know, training or going at a call itself.
Okay, thank you.
John, pride and loyalty, define them and why they are important in the fire service.
Pride, they're both very important in fire service, pride is something that I, you have to feel that you are. You're happy what you're doing. If I didn't enjoy being on the fire department for so many years, I would've left a long time ago. But there's always a knowledge and know-how of, maybe sometimes you could get down and out or something, but then you go to a couple of calls, you go to a call, and then you know why, there's a reasoning why you're doing it. And it, it gives me pride for myself. Loyalty, I feel, you have to, uh, earn loyalty a little bit. That being said, I feel that hopefully me being on any, uh, fire department for X amount of years. Members of the fire department have some, uh, loyalty about me, respect about me. I also have a lot, I have, I have loyalty about everyone that's on the fire department. Some guys have been on for a couple of years, some for many years. And loyalty, you know, if everyone has loyalty, you're all, basically you're one team, you're one unit.
Thank you.
John, where do you see the fire service going and how do you see it changing in the next five to ten years?
I see the fire service changing in the next five, ten years of providing more service to the residents in general. I feel that the public itself doesn't really realize what the fire department does. I feel, I think they think all they do is fight fires. And even my own family members kinda think that, I have friends who think that. I think we gotta get more knowledge of who, how we train and, um, how often we train. 'Cause there are people that have asked me, is, they asked me over, over the years, why do you keep training? I said, there's always training involved in the fire department, there's new techniques, there's new ways of doing stuff. And that's how I think the fire service would, would change. That being said, I feel that. Part of the problem if the fire service doesn't change is the, it could be the public itself. They feel, the public might feel that. They're only there for one thing and it's up to the fire department to change the way they, uh, they operate when, as they speak to the public.
Thank you.
John. Do you have any questions for us? Or is there anything else you'd like to add that you haven't covered already?
Um, I have no, no, I have no questions for you.
No questions? Okay. And that concludes our interview with. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one more to go. And I don't have another sheet. Do you have an extra sheet for any of John? Hmm, interesting. Yeah, you should have one more too. Hmm. Well, then. Hmm, I'm all set.
Mm-hmm.
She found it, Lorraine, she has it.
Thank you for your patience.
We're all set.
It's hiding on me. Okay, um.
Coelho.
Coelho. Thank you. Is he also? Tim Coelho. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself to us and would, um, hmm, why would you like to be an Islam metal firefighter? And what have you done to prepare yourself for this position?
I am Timothy Coelho. I moved to Islam metal about frie- five years ago. Uh, I have a son and a wife.
Okay.
I grew up in Springfield, Massachusetts. The reason why I wanna become Islam metal firefighter, um. I wanna be the person to come and help someone when in a hard situation of, uh, fire, uh, smoke alarm, carbon monoxide. Be the person to put them in safe and instead of harm's way. Educate children. And sorry, what was the second question?
Uh, what have you done to prepare yourself for this position?
Um, I bring, I figure I bring my good responsibility, um, good work ethic, team player. I am a supervisor right now for a construction company. I can handle stress. I've been through situations where there's been a lot of stress and everything, pretty much handles on its own. I have a hard work ethic.
Okay.
I give my hundred percent all the time. I'm a responsible person. I'm liable.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, what is the advantage of working in teams? And why is teamwork so important in the fire service?
Um, it's, it's like what I do now, I'm a supervisor, I have a group of guys I take care of, it's like this fire service, you work as a team. Things will come out better as you work together. If you work against each other, you're gonna have situations where it might be a problem. Being a team player is the number one rule. 'Cause if you're not a team player, you're not helping out each other, you're making the job harder on yourself. To get things to where you want them, you gotta help out each other, any type of situation. If you see a fire, fire, one of your own firefighters down, you gotta go in together, get them out in safe arm, safe way. I, um, as a supervisor, I try to get the job done, safe way, completed in a safe way.
Okay, thank you, John.
Tim, what is the most appealing aspect of being a firefighter? And what is the least appealing aspect of being a firefighter?
The most appealing is children for a fact, they look up at firefighters as a good role model. My son, um, I've been coaching for the past five years, since I've been in the fire service since November two thousand thirteen. I coach basketball, soccer, and recently the children are saying, Coach Coelho, you're a fireman, I say, yes, I do. I come here to protect you guys, make sure you guys are sa- safe play. So you know, in a situation, you're gonna be helped. And children look up to people like a fireman, police officer, just like my boss looks up to me to get the job done for him as a supervisor. The least is you could be eating dinner with your child on his third birthday, fifth birthday, tenth birthday, or celebrating an anniversary, you get the call. You wanna resp- you gotta respond. You would wanna respond just like somebody would respond when your house is burning. Or smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm, anything, gas. So you would wanna, a firefighter to take care of you like you would take care of them.
Thank you.
Tim, what personality traits do you possess that make you feel you would be a good firefighter?
I am of, like I say, in my job now, I'm a dedicated supervisor. There's been times I give extra fifteen, twenty minutes to go in early, get things prepared, to get the job done during the morning, to make sure everything's organized. To, uh, start getting the job and once you get to the job site, I focus on preparing myself. Preparing myself in a situation where you arrive, arrive early. Um. Make sure everything's done in a safe manner way. You present yourself as loyalty, respectful, uh, manner. You, you, as a firefighter, you're like representing the community that you live in. When you're right, meet people, if you're wearing a shirt, you gotta represent yourself with a nice smile, so everybody looks at you. Appreciate that you're there to help them out.
Tim? Suppression, prevention, and public education. Rank them in order of importance, and then explain your reasoning. Excuse me, importance in the fire service.
In the fire service.
Mm-hmm, and explain your reasoning.
Public education is the first thing you wanna start off. Children at the age until sixteen, eighteen, they don't understand things that could prevent a fire. By going to the school systems and explaining how not to prevent fires. Would help them out from causing any type of fire, leaving an iron on or playing with matches. Prevention. Like, the education starts, so this way, there you have the education to not prevent the fire. Um, teaching senior citizens, going out, make sure all the smoke alarms are working. And suppression. Will be to put. Would be uh. By, by educating.
Mm-hmm.
The children. Suppression, prevent, education prevention, suppression. By the first two, they will learn. That if you learn the first two steps of education prevention. We wouldn't have to worry about any type of fire hazards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, when would you disobey an order?
You couldn't disobey an order. The only way you would disobey an order if it was unsafe for yourself. By means, if they gave you an order where you think it wasn't gonna be safe. I would disobey if it was gonna put my life in danger. I would go risk my life to take out another firefighter out. That's your job is, what to do, to. To um, make the person survive, to help them out. This is, I, I'm not saying I would disobey if the chief says, Tim, we need you to go in there, you always go in too, you come out too. If he gave me a, a job to do in the fire service, and if it's gonna be my harms way, my safe. If it's not gonna be safe enough, I say, chief, this is not gonna be safe, safe enough, is there another way we could work around to get it done? I would try to ask him if there was a different way, cause if I thought it was not a safe way to do it.
Tim, pride and loyalty, define them and why, why they are important in the fire service.
Pride. You wanna be pride as a fireman. You're there to. Help somebody that's in danger. You're there to help out any type of circumstances with somebody's life, cat, dog, um. To rescue a car accident. You wanna be, you represent the community, the town, city you work for. So, you gotta take. And show that you, you're a dedicated person, that you're there to, you're gonna make that job. You're gonna help yourself become the best firefighter for the town. I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Uh, loyalty.
Loyalty.
Yeah.
Loyalty. You wanna make sure. You, you're gonna be loyal to the fire department, no matter what circumstances you're in. You're gonna be responsible, respectful. You're gonna. Come, do your job. Respect the others you work with, and work as a team.
Thank you. Tim, where do you see the fire service going and how do you see it changing in the next five to ten years?
I see the fire service going, getting better and better as time goes by, with the new technology. Uh, the more you learn, the better you get at things. Um, changing wise. It's only gonna get bigger, and it's gonna get. More people who know how to respond, to react in situation. Where years ago, we didn't have the technology we have now. You would take that experience, you're gonna learn more. And use it when you're on the job.
Thank you.
Tim, thank you, um, do you have any questions for us, or is there anything else that you'd like to add that you haven't already covered?
Nope.
Nope, okay, well, thank you so much for your service and thank you for coming in today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, John.
Do you need a moment to go over the resumes?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Okay. No discussion, okay, well, I, first of all, I'll, I'll start it off, I wanna uh, thank all the candidates. That did come in and were willing to step up, um, uh, for the interview. Um, we had some good information that was uh, revealed. Um, and looking at the resumes in combination, um, with the resumes and the interviewing, um. I. Did anybody else use a number system like I did?
I have a ranking system in my, in my head.
I, I did a ranking system too, and I, I, if we can share our rankings, I, I will go through and share mine. Um, my top one is Mr. Manahan. Uh, followed by, we'll give our top two, followed by Matt. Um, Mr. Gorman, do you, uh, excuse me, Selectman Gorman.
Yeah, I think Mike Manahan was my favorite as far as answering questions and knowledge and stuff.
Okay, and your next one?
And Matt Terowski, I thought did a good job, number two.
Selectman Federich?
Well, my top candidate was Mike Manahan, and my second was Matt Terowski, I thought Mike had the best, educationally, he had, you know, he had, he had a little better background than everyone else. Everyone did a good job.
They did do a great job, exactly.
Throwing somebody at that age in front of the four of us, answering questions, it's not, you know, it's like the Inquisition, so everyone has to.
Exactly, exactly. I felt the same way, and, and uh.
I, I agree with the board, um, one of the things I like to say is that, um, having guys come from within the department. Um, it, it's, it's kinda proud to know that they can come before you guys with their years of experience, whether it's. An individual that's been on for a year, or an individual that has been on ten years, um, from our end, it's a great pre-interview.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wouldn't bring anybody before the board that I didn't think would meet the board's expectations. Um, and, and the town's expectations, these guys, they're all, um, career firefighters at heart, at heart. Um, and they, and they do the job, and uh, uh, one of them did say, you know, you're, you're going out at two o'clock in the morning in the middle of a snowstorm.
Right.
The other, I think somebody else said you're getting interrupted during family dinners.
Yeah.
That's the nature of our business, um, and, and they all do the job well, and not just these four.
Yeah, okay.
I, I have a great group of guys, um, that, you know, love, love the passion, love the, the integrity that they build with the town.
So I guess this is a nice problem to have, having to choose between, uh, four candidates that are, are really loyal to our town and. And ser, and really true public servants.
Exactly.
So, um, hearing what I have heard so far, is there something else that you wanted to say, uh, chief?
I'm, I'm good.
All right, hearing what I've heard, uh, so far, I will entertain a motion, um, to recommend Michael Manahan.
Uh, so move.
Second.
Second, any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Nick, will you notify Mr. Manahan? Of the recommendation?
Through the, through the chair.
Yes, please.
The last time we did this in November.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the four individuals we interviewed were in the hall outside.
Oh.
Um, I, I'm not sure if they're there now, but.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, if you wanna do it that way, or I mean, you want me to tell them, or, I told them last time.
Oh, if, if, Nick, if you don't.
I, I would defer, uh, to the chief, well, to the board's decision, if that's the budget of the board, certainly.
Okay.
Let the chief notify the candidates.
Okay, Selectman Federich, do you?
That's, I have no problem with it.
You have no problem with it?
No, I have no problem.
Okay, so then, we'll correct Amanda Menitz to say that chief will notify them.
Thank you.
Of the, um. Of the appointment.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Now, we have, uh, seven ten appointment, we're just a little bit early, I'm not sure if Mr. Denver is in the. With Mr. He is, can we take, oh, I'm sorry, can we take a five minute recess, but before we do that, you wanna say something?
I, I have another item on the agenda further down, it's, I believe it's a quick, should be a quick item, it's under new business.
Um, I'd rather just.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't mind. Yeah, let's, let's kinda go in order here.
Okay.
Okay?
Not a problem.
All right. Do we have time to take a five minute break? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to take a five minute recess.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Um, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. It's seven ten. Plus a minute or two, um, we're back in session, um, our next appointment is with, uh, Russ Denver, chairman of the appropriations committee. Come on up.
Well, I have the whole crew here.
Well, come on up, bring in the whole crew.
Anyone just.
Well, Jim, why don't you come up as the liaison for that, uh, for that account?
Why, sir, Mr. Federich? Why, you sir? Angel?
My father is here.
Um, we became aware that, um, and on the warrant. Uh, the, you know, as you know, we all were supposed to be within a one percent increase. Um, when the warrant came out, there was some departments that were over the one percent. And I just wanted to make sure that there was an explanation to the folks in Islam metal who are watching this, and so that. Before we get to town meeting, they understand what took place there, and that there was a compliance with the one percent. However, how it became, how it's gonna appear that it there isn't.
Well, I, I'll start and you can jump in.
Yeah.
So Jim is the, the liaison for primarily town hall related departments.
Operations.
The operations account.
Okay.
Um, and so, he did his due diligence, and he, I believe he met with Nick.
Yeah.
And discussed that account.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we then also, during our budget process, met with Ryan Quimby. And we asked him questions about what was in that account, and what would be more appropriate. For things to go into IT, cause I think most of the telephone related things were there.
Telephones for the whole town?
No, that, in the operations budget, Nick, and I think there were, there were, there was a telephone charge in there.
Okay.
For, and I don't have the figures with me, but.
There was a, a twenty thousand dollar account relative to the maintenance and upkeep and charges for the copper lines in our system. Uh, that exist, that still exist.
Okay.
And that, and the, it's just one moment, and those copper lines service who, who?
I, I wanna say, um, throughout the schools, but, but before I, before I get that far, because we're served. Um, within town hall, uh, V O I P, without the copper. Um, there may be still some lines over at the Council on Aging Building.
Okay.
Um, and I believe there are some at the schools, and I believe there are some, uh, backups relative to, uh, police.
Okay.
But primarily, when there are telephone related issues.
Right.
Ryan seems to be the go-to person to resolve some of those telephone issues.
That's true, uh, Ryan acts as the main point of contact with the company that would make a repair, so. Uh, some of those charges may also service, uh, the other portion of the system. So that was one part of the forty-five thousand dollar account, the operations account. Um, that was, that was set aside and has been for a number of years at twenty thousand dollars, uh, as a contingency for maintenance and upkeep.
And then there was a, another. Chunk of money, and I don't remember what it was, for, for a copy machine?
Yeah, thirty-one thirty, thirty-one thirty was.
And, and there was some, I, and I don't have the sheet with me, but, but there were like three or four things that were, that were in the operations budget. And when I talked to Nick about it, he, he told me that they were all part of operations, but he had no control of any of them. So it was other people doing.
Mm-hmm.
So I said, why don't you, we take the money that's there, and put that, or get rid of, of that from operations.
Mm-hmm.
Since a lot was a contingency, so you weren't using it every year.
Okay.
And put it where it belongs.
All right, and when was that conversation? If you don't mind me asking, ballpark it.
Sometime in, in March or.
Um, no, uh, that one, that particular. Between you and I, as a liaison, must have been sometime first or second week of January.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so I, so then we met with Ryan Quimby would have been in early January.
Okay.
And then Mr. Federich came in with his liaison departments. And we addressed the issue with Mr. Federich, I have a hard time calling him Mr. Federich, with Paul. Um, and.
Really known you since we were five.
I know, I know, um, you're still good looking, that's all I can say.
Your eyes are going.
And, um, so there was general agreement that, yes, it made sense to do so. Because essentially, we, we had certain counts where people were going like this on who's in charge of the monies that were in the account.
Mm-hmm.
And so, for the appropriations committee, and you can join in, it made sense to put the money in the department for the person that was going to oversee those dollars. Because there had to be some accountability, rather than just having a chunk of money where multiple people kinda went into it and grabbed it and used it.
Or nobody knew.
Or nobody knew, so put the money with the department, which the person had, quote, authority over it. And then, so, then Nick asked that I stop in last week, I think it was last week, last week. And said, okay, is this still the plan, is the appropriations committee still on board with all of this? I said theoretically, yes, but then we brought it to the committee, and the committee blessed it last week and said, okay, this makes sense. Nick had sent us the revised budgets, so that we would see where the money was going to and what the impact would be. And then subsequently, he sent out a very well-written, um, memorandum. Which said that the appropriations committee is more than happy to stand up and defend. the Appropriations Committee is more than happy to stand up and defend the accountability issue, because I think people want to know that someone's paying attention to where the money's going. And so I thought it was very well-written. And then you asked me to come in.
Actually, I asked you before that memorandum went out.
That's right, at the...
I did, as soon as I saw it, exactly. So I guess my question is, how much of this money, since you've been tracking it, how much of it was actually being used? And I guess, how much was going back to the general fund after? Was it, was all of it being used traditionally? Because you said you didn't know...
And I still don't know how much was actually being used every, it was different every year, right?
It has been different every year. I think the only constants in there, if you will, are the ones related to copier costs. There are three copiers, and those costs are now pulled out of there and put into the departments. So those are lease costs.
Mm-hmm.
So those would be fairly constant, depending on what the variable is on the number of copies that are made.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be pretty close to what those figures are. I think they're each at thirty-one hundred or so. The contingency on the telephone number, that would be more variable.
Okay, so I guess also, moving forward, what we've done is we've increased the budget for IT by $20,000. So when it comes to just ballpark it, if you give a 1%, it's going to be even more for that department. Is that correct or not?
I would say that I think we're all intelligent individuals here, and we will keep track of that separately, because that would be a fixed cost, in our opinion. So we'd keep a close eye on that.
I think my question is, if you weren't using $20,000 every year...
Right. Why would you put it in there?
Why would you put it in IT?
Exactly. That's...
All I want to do is point out, there was money that nobody was watching, and it wasn't used every year, and then money was turned back.
Okay.
So why not put...
So why do we even put it in there if we're not using it? Why would we increase the budget?
That's up to you guys. I mean, you could take the money that was in the $40,000, and you could put it in general fund if you wanted to. Or if you needed the money to do stuff with copy machines or with the telephone, then take the money you need and give it to the IT or give it to the various departments. That's, it was just, nobody was watching the budget.
No, no.
Nobody knew what was going on.
And I want to remind the board members...
Mm-hmm.
...that the Appropriations Committee acts on the budgets that are submitted to us for review by the boards that oversee the departments.
Okay.
So if next year, if you want to cut $20,000 in IT, have at it. And then submit that budget, and we'll review it from there and make a recommendation one way or the other. So...
Yeah, I'm going to go there. Is this something, if this board deems we have a meeting right before the town meeting, if we were to decide that we wanted to take that out of the budget on the town floor, would we be able to do that?
You would have to make an amendment, I believe. I think when, you know, we go through each section of the budget, and the moderator asks, you know, if there are any questions.
Yeah.
I think that's when you say question, and they go back to it. And then you have a discussion on the floor at town meeting, and people either agree or disagree. But that's the opportunity for you to do so.
Okay. I want to give my other board members an opportunity to speak if they would like to do so.
Thank you.
Select a federated chief.
I was just going to say, this figure, this vague $45,000, whatever it is, is in the budget as a figure.
Well, it was in the operations budget.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm just saying, like, where we stand now, if we take that out of there and move it to other places, it doesn't affect the bottom line, it just affects a different, each individual budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Nothing was increased, the $45,000 was not increased.
Right.
No, it wasn't increased, but when you shifted it over to, or applied it to an actual department, that did increase the department's budget. And that's what they would, that's the number, that increase is the number that you would use going forward. But I'm certainly sure we'll have a discussion about this later.
Yeah, no, I have no...
Select one. Okay.
May I a little clearer for me?
Okay.
So there's no increase in the overall bottom line?
In the overall budget, right.
Period. It was an allocation for accountability reasons. And next year, as you review the departments under your peer view, you wish to, or even at town meeting, you wish to remove it? Have at it, so...
Thank you very much for coming in. Does anything else you wanted to add?
No, that's it.
Just other, just some housekeeping. So we are preparing a report to town meeting, which we hope will have all set for tomorrow or no later than Thursday evening. So I will forward that to you for your review, so there's no surprises.
Okay.
We will also, like we did at the budget hearing, make written copies available for people who will attend. We, it's my belief that we will expand on what we passed out at the budget hearing. We're going to get a little deeper into salary structures. So we are using the teachers, the current teachers' contract. So we will show how steps are done, but we will also add in a peek at some of their retirement functions, so that when someone retires, they're entitled to X. They have a sick leave buyback provision, we'll show how that works. We are also going to do the same for the police department, not the fire, like it showed at the budget hearing. So we will show their salaries and the lack of really steps, the educational incentive slash Quinn bill. And so if someone gets a 2% increase on, let's say, a $60,000 base salary, that's another 1,200, but it does then impact the Quinn bill.
Mm-hmm.
So it's actually more than a 2%. So we will show that, we will show their retirement, their retirement calculation, and we're also going to show their, I think, they don't have sick, they have longevity payments and those type of things. So it's a very clear for people to understand that when you say it's a 2%, it isn't always a 2%.
Mm-hmm.
And that those are concerns that the Appropriations Committee has...
Okay.
...about escalating salaries and benefits.
Okay.
So don't be surprised when you see it.
Okay, so is it, by any chance, is that going to be available for people prior to the town meeting, so they can really look at it? I'm not just talking about boards, I'm talking about for the general public.
I don't know where I would put it, honestly, so...
Well, through the chair, as they walk in the door.
Yeah, they're going to have it. We're going to make written copies like we did for the budget hearing.
I was just trying to figure out, if they can get it earlier, why can't we have them distributed here at Town Hall?
Conceivably, if I've got it done by time...
Yeah, we could just put it on the counter.
They'd be happy to, so...
And distribute them, yeah.
It's a much clearer explanation of our concerns, which we've expressed at the budget hearing, about salaries and benefits and so forth.
Well, let me ask my board before I say, do you see any problem with having that on the counter in Town Hall here?
No, not at all.
No?
Okay, so...
And I just want to repeat for people who might be paying attention, this is not a indictment on whether it's a good contract or not, it's simply showing the concerns that we have about the escalating costs associated with those. If I may, through the chair, are you going to put anything in there about how theoretically you can change steps and have a 0% pay increase but have somebody get a higher salary? I think that goes without saying.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's in there.
But if I miss that, certainly feel free to stand up and add that to it.
I don't get the big bucks that you do.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
All right, so you'll make some of those available for...
I will do my very best to have it by Friday afternoon.
That would be perfect.
But I have other things that I also need to do at work.
Oh, please. No sympathy here, no violence.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, thank you very much for coming in.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you to the other two.
Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay. All right, our next appointment is Mr. Tom Florence. I think he's here, and we're running a little late, but come on up, Mr. Florence. He's our town clerk, treasurer, and collector.
Thank you very much for spending a few minutes to talk about this proposal, you know, in an effort to always think about trying to get some revenues and some additional monies, you know, generated. There's a couple ideas that came to my mind, of things that, look at other departments, other towns, surrounding communities, one of them being burial permits. You know, prior, Board of Selective Members didn't want to charge for burial permits, and we're the only one in Western Mass that does not. And again, we have three assisted living facilities, and we've averaged 350 deaths per year in the last three years.
Mm-hmm.
And what goes along with every death certificate is a burial permit. And, you know, right now, the forest stairs comes in, and, you know, we're, in all the other communities, they pay the $25, $35, whatever the charge may be. East La Metal doesn't charge them anything. And that's the way it's been, that's the way it's always been. And again, it's up to the board and up to you to decide if that's something, if we want to consider, you know, a charge for a burial permit in the future. And again, for the number that we have, the death certificate's multiplied by a dollar amount, it's just, you know, again, it's just a way to try to generate some additional, you know, fee revenue.
Okay.
Okay?
Select a federated chief, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, I just wanted to ask, what work is involved to generate a burial permit?
Oh, there's a form that you have to fill out, so from the vital records. It's a standard form, and the funeral homes have to come in, and then they, you know, they fill out, we go in, they give us information, we go in, we produce the burial permit, and then we give it to them. And then they take it back, and then they're allowed to go back to the families.
So, I'm sorry, I was, so obviously, and not to be sexist about it, but there are man-hours involved, man-hour, woman-hour, but there are employee hours involved in generating this, and we haven't been charging up till now, so, you know...
Right, there are some. I'd be happy to tell you the average. It doesn't take long, but there is some time.
Because hasn't it gone to electric filing now?
It is, it headed in that direction.
It is heading in that direction, so therefore it will be less time.
It will eventually be less time.
Okay. Oh, are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, our fees are comparable to other towns according to this, so we're in the ballpark?
Well, for burial permits, right now, we don't, we never charge, so it's always been zero. And other cities and towns have charged, the norm is about $25, Northampton charges $35.
Yep.
So it's around the $25 mark is what most cities and towns charge for a burial permit fee. And again, what happens is the forest stairs, though, give us the money, and they'll ultimately probably go back, and they will, you know, charge the, you know, the families.
So you're taxing the dead.
That's going to give us additional revenue of how much?
Yeah, it'll be approximately $8,750, between $8,500 and $9,000 per year in February.
Can we take that under advisement?
Sure.
I mean, it's just something that, part of my job is treasury, just to...
If I may, through the chair, one more point. Even if technology comes in to make the process easier, we're paying for the technology. So obviously, it's a cost on our part regardless of whether it's a human being doing it or a software program, we're paying for it, so...
That's correct.
Are we paying for a software program now? Isn't it, it's, there's no charge for the software program that would be used to generate this? Are you referring to just the person operating the computer, right?
No, no.
Okay, because there's, is there a charge from the state for this program?
I don't know what the exact breakdown, you know, how the state charges every city in town.
Okay.
But there's probably minor charges, yeah.
Okay.
But the bulk of the charge is going to be in the man-hours to produce it.
Can you certainly, if that's some more information comes up with that, certainly forward that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You bet. In the, the other idea was our demand fees in town. We've always charged, since 1987, there was legislation passed, the D.O.R., that $5 would be the, would be the fee. We were charging $2.50 prior to that, which is, what, 27 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
So for the last 27 years, demand fees have always been $5.
Okay.
Okay? And again, a lot of cities and towns are looking to raise that, again, to generate some additional fee revenue for the general fund.
Okay, just explain for our listening audience, what a demand fee and how it comes into play.
Good question, good question. What a demand fee is, the bulk of the demand fees, probably most of them, are for real estate taxes and motor vehicle taxes, and some personal property taxes. If you don't pay your, for example, you don't pay your motor vehicle fee in 30 days, you have 14 days, it's usually 14 to 21 days, and if they still haven't paid, then you generate what's called a demand.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a, as I've seen, it's a pink slip that goes to the taxpayer, saying you're being demanded, that you haven't paid your excess tax, please pay within 30 days.
Okay.
And we send out approximately 3,000 of those per year between, the bulk of them, say here, is between the motor vehicle commitments. In motor vehicles, as you guys know, it's, you're always trading your car, you don't check, you know, for a baby, you know, go to your insurance company, things can fall through the cracks.
Mm-hmm.
And, but, you know, most time, people do come in, and they do pay the demand fee once they get the notice, before it gets marked or sent to the registry. In real estate, much the same way.
Okay.
After two weeks, you haven't paid your real estate bill, it's like a notification we send out to you saying, you know, there's a $5 demand fee that we charge for that. That's...
Select one.
Tom, what if they don't pay it? If they get a demand notice and they don't pay it, what happens then?
Okay, for a motor vehicle or real estate?
Yeah, say a motor vehicle.
For motor vehicle, then it gets warranted. If it's not paid within 30 days, there's a warrant charge, and that's when it goes to the deputy collector. And we use, that's Kelly and Ryan, all cities and towns have a deputy collector. And then it's in their database, so if, you know, once it's warranted, they get another notification.
Okay.
And if it's still not paid, then it gets marked, another 14 days after the warrant gets marked at the registry of motor vehicles.
So I guess, so if it ever goes down to a warrant, that $10, the $5 demand fee, is that still included in the price of...
Yes.
Well, the warrant, and so we would still get that $5 back from, even though it's referred to Kelly and...
Kelly and Ryan.
Kelly and Ryan, okay.
Right, we would still get that, yes, yeah.
All right, so right now, it's five?
It's five.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Yeah, you bet.
Attorney. Wow. Select a federated chief.
I'm upset, thank you.
All right, okay.
And again, a lot of cities and towns are charging, you know, 15, 20, 25, which I thinks, but personally, I think that's too big of a jump, I think.
Mm-hmm.
You know, $10, again, it's, would generate, up in that $5 for those two, would generate additional approximately $17,000 in fee revenue with the demand, so, nothing for your consideration.
Certainly, certainly. And we appreciate you bringing that to us.
Okay, it's okay, I don't know if it's, I just want to bring up one thing.
Sure.
There's a person that worked for us for a voter registrar, and I know I didn't put it in the agenda, but Dan Lassendonia recently passed away.
Passed away, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I just want to give my sincere gratitude. He was tremendous to work with, very knowledgeable, really had a passion for our town and a passion for being a voter registrar and helping out with the elections.
Exactly.
So, I just want to...
My condolences to him and his family.
Yeah.
Do we know when the services are?
Yeah, they had just, they finished up.
Just finished up, okay.
Yeah. But I wanted to recognize him here, and I also sent a, you know, a card to his family.
In the future, hopefully, there won't be one in the future. Could you let somebody in the Selectmen's office, so that way they can send us an email and?
You bet.
That way we can show...
I didn't know myself this time, unfortunately, until after. But in the future, I will absolutely do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks for your time and consideration.
No problem.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, our next appointment is at 7:35. That's with Mr. Brian Folt, Chairman of the Islam Meadow Planning Committee, Ari Skyw. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Sorry, sir.
Sorry.
I scared you with the surfact, didn't I?
Yes, you did. I'm not used to that term. Some time ago, the team, the cert team, brought up the thought of how we need to promote the team through the town website.
Mm-hmm.
What I just handed out to you was something I generated using part of Microsoft Word.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have to be in this format, it could be, it's basically the content.
Mm-hmm.
One thing that's not part of this, because it wasn't part of the program, was the application forms also.
Okay.
Between Nick and I, we've got those pretty well covered, but if they wanted to download one, so they would have it, instead of saving a trip down to the town hall, if we could possibly include, if possible, we could include that also. They would still have to come in, once they've filled it out, though, with photo ID, so a core check can be done. But this would, this would help promote, promote the team, let residents of the town know that we have such a team and what is entailed to become part of it.
Okay. Now, how does this relate to Skywarn?
This actually, actually, I mentioned I wanted to come in about cert and Skywarn, the last thing.
Oh, okay.
The last thing I had was, was just a quick thing about Skywarn.
Okay.
Which I, which I, I will get into.
Okay, sure.
As things go by.
So, okay, so now I'm backing up for one minute, Brian.
Right.
So, this doesn't have anything to do with Skywarn?
No.
You're looking to try to get this onto the?
Promote the team.
To promote the team on our, on our town's website?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Uh...
I was just looking for Skywarn, I said, okay, it's coming, it's coming.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'm...
Actually, it is coming.
All right.
Uh, this is another item.
Thank you.
Uh, this would also have an impact with medical reserve, potential impact with the medical reserve corps, if it could be set up. I'm not going to get, I don't want to get into a long discussion, but this material was available to me about what other communities have done for liability for their cert, their medical reserve corps, because I'm also now part of an advisory committee through State of Emergency Management on cert teams. There's a lack of liability coverage for team members. The only time it would apply is when they're activated by the Emergency Management Director.
Okay.
So, it'd be strictly while they're operating. But I wanted to pass this out tonight, night to you folks, so you'd have something to review.
Okay.
I know you've got a busy agenda, so I didn't want to, really want to get into it.
Okay. What is the current liability coverage?
Nothing.
Zero.
I believe it's the same for medical reserve corps.
What is it, once it becomes active?
Uh, there are...
Can you get that and get back to us on that?
There are, well, there are a number of ways, different communities handle this.
Mm-hmm.
The town, the City of Gloucester actually went out and got an insurance policy, which I'm not looking to do. So, and I know this discussion's come up with previous boards, previous times, about making special volunteer employees.
Hmm.
Again, though, the only way, the only time the liability would come into play is when they are activated and performing their duty.
Okay. Okay.
Now, for Skywarn, I want to thank Don Mackey for putting on the, on Elcat. It is open to the general public.
Okay.
And there's no prior registration, so...
Oh, there is no prior registration?
There is no prior registration. So, if you want to become, learn about severe weather and how to be a weather spotter and help, help the country and the National Weather Service.
Mm-hmm.
Come on down to the high school, starts, it's going to start at 7:00 PM, run possibly till 10:00 PM on Thursday, May 29th.
Okay.
In the auditorium.
Okay. And is, that's not just for Islam Meadow residents, right?
Yeah, it's for anybody.
Anybody who wants to come?
I understand there are some people from Springfield Emergency Management that are going to attend.
Okay.
It was also, is also getting promoted through the National Weather Service and through Mass Emergency Management.
Okay. You guys are going to have your hands full, 7:00 AM to 7, to 10:00 PM?
It's also, it's also just prior to the anniversary of the June 1, 2011 tornado.
Tornado, hmm.
And I understand they're going to cover a lot of, a lot of the different tornadoes that have hit Western Massachusetts over the last many years.
Okay, so, there's no limit?
I have, I have, no, no limit. I did ask about prior registration early on, and they said there's no need for registration.
Okay, all right then.
But it's a nationally, nationally known program that we're getting in town here.
Okay, now, do you get some sort of certification after you do this?
I believe so. I know one thing that the participants will get is a, a special card with the information that they need to notify the Weather Service of sightings.
Oh, okay. Well, hopefully, there'll be none. Selectmen Federici?
Nope.
Selectmen Warren?
Nope.
Okay. Is that everything?
That's it.
All right, thank you so much for coming in.
For tonight, anyway. We can schedule another time with something else if that's there, or if you want me to come back in or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment will be, okay, I guess we're going straight to the approval of the minutes?
No, we got Dan Helyer.
Well, that's what I thought, but it's not showing up on, am I looking at an old copy now?
Could be.
Switched over. You have an old copy, too.
What do you, what's next?
Mr. Helyer.
We got it on us.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Helyer, our Building Commissioner.
How are you?
Thank you.
Sir? Good, yourself?
Well, Dan, as you know, we've been getting several phone calls with regards to the pizza shop, and so we called you in just to give a quick report and maybe, you know, put some questions to bed and, and see where we're going to go from here.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay. I believe you should have received this.
Did, I don't, I, we didn't...
It should be, it should be in your envelope.
Okay, so that was put in this afternoon after I left?
Yeah.
Right there. In one of those folders.
There we go.
Okay. All right, so, want to go through it?
Yeah. Originally, when the carpenter came in and talked to me about this, it was just a renovation of the bar.
Okay.
And as it states in here, the work did not require a building permit in accordance with a 780 CMR, which is our building code, and it's under Section 105.2, work exempt, this is under the commercial.
Okay.
Work exempt from permit num, and from permit number seven, painting, paper, tile, and carpentry cabinets, countertops, and similar finished work. It was just a minor repair. Well, as I know that, until Paul Morris notified me, that it had gone beyond exactly what it is.
Okay.
So, on 4/18, I met with Ben...
4/8 or 4/18?
4/18.
Because it's...
4/8, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be sure.
I'm looking at the 14 and the 8.
That's all right.
Okay, that's my error.
That's all right.
4/8, I met with the fire inspectors regarding the expanded work being done at the pizza shop.
Mm-hmm.
The minor work had expanded into major renovations, and that was without me being notified. The fire marshal's office, he yelled, "Stop work, stop work," but under the building code, he doesn't have that authority, but that's a whole different issue. And I talked to the owner, and I told him this work cannot continue until I have architectural plans and also a building, of course.
All right. So, when did you get the architectural plan actually from?
I actually got the, the plan of 4/24, which I issued the building permit at that time.
Okay.
And, well, work didn't continue on 4, until 4/25. Okay, on 5/6, myself and Ben Cody, fire, I should say Fire Inspector Cody, who's a great, great person to work with, and me, we, we went over and did what they call the 304 inspection. It's required, it's an annual inspection, but considering that there had been changes made, it was our decision to reissue the, the certificate of inspection.
You reissued it?
Yes, we have to reissue it, because it was, there was actually a change in the occupancy, which went down. It dropped by, it's dropped by about 60. And during our inspection, we verified the number of seats, the egress, and the occupant load. The fire alarm had been previously, previously tested and approved by Inspector Cody prior to the final exam, final, final inspection. We agreed that the business met the requirements of Chapter 304 of the Acts of 2004, and a certificate of inspection should be issued on this date. The certificate has been issued. We had received building permits, we have received electrical permit, and we received plumbing permits. So, everything had been signed off prior to any of this occurring.
Okay, so they have the Chapter 304?
We have, well, they have it, they have it now.
They have it now?
Yeah.
Did you have an opportunity to see that?
I did not, from what I understand, Ben got together with Dan this afternoon.
Yeah.
This afternoon? Okay, and so who's responsible for delivering that to the establishment, and when was it done?
Well, it hasn't been delivered, that somebody's coming in to pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, but prior to that happening, should the business be open?
Yes, because they had passed the inspection.
When occupancy of a building comes into play, it falls more under the building code. Our end of it is, has been inspected, the fire, the fire code has been inspected prior to even Dan's visit with Lieutenant Cody. Lieutenant Cody had visited the restaurant several times with, I think, Ed Legu, the inspector, because our fire alarm ties directly in with Ed Legu's.
Okay, yep, yep, okay.
So, our end was, our end was, was up and, up and running well beyond, well before Dan, they were ready for Dan.
Okay. All right, and so, they need to come in and pick that up from you, is that correct?
Correct.
And you called them today?
No, they've been coming, and I just haven't had the time to, to issue it. That goes under, Maureen was out yesterday, and she's the one who issues, good, who cuts them, we sign them. And the reason for that is she maintains the whole file, and I don't have access to her computer.
Okay, so we're talking about from the 6th until now? So, 7, so it's...
Yeah, that was last week.
All right, any questions, Selectmen Federici? Selectmen Warren?
Yeah, Dan, so they had all their permits, so everything's legal there?
Everything has been.
Yep.
They had to, they had to go through their, their gas, plumbing.
Yep.
Electrical, fire alarm, has to go through.
Yep.
On, before I even walk in there.
Because I, because I did talk to the electrical inspector that day I came to the office, and he said he just got done inspecting it, so I know.
I won't issue it until they're done with it.
All right.
Typically, of the, is it, is it legal for them to be open while all of this was going on?
Yes.
Because you said they never close, it is?
It is.
Okay. Is it, is it legal for them to have started the work prior to receiving the permit?
No.
And it's a two-part question, and is there a punitive piece that goes with that?
Well...
For not getting?
Yeah.
Okay, and what are the typical?
For, for a business?
Mm-hmm.
To be honest with you, I try to avoid issuing a business, a fines, other than somebody that continually is not to conform. I can actually give them a ticket.
I'm, in, under your jurisdiction, I'm just asking what...
I normally wouldn't do it. Considering that this gentleman came into compliance, and he obeyed all the, all the rules when I told him that he can't work in here anymore until he gets a building permit, he immediately contacted a architect, stopped work, contacted an architect, got the plans in about a week, and he was all ready to go again.
But whenever there's a, a change in the floor plan, there's also needs to be an inspection by the Health Department?
I realize that.
And my understanding is that, that has not taken place yet either?
I can't, I can't answer that, because that's not my jurisdiction. Health departments, but falls under.
Have we directed our health agent to go over there and do an inspection? And if not, can we?
Yes, we can.
Can you see the Chair, what the health?
Yeah, you know, you know the problem we had with the health agent.
Yeah.
He was here two weeks, and now he's gone, so we gotta...
Okay.
So, but as soon as we get that established...
So, had you, so had you told us, we would, we would have been able to have gotten him in there, now we're in a situation.
Hmm.
Okay, you've given your report, I guess we'll have to take this under advisement. And right now, they're open. We will notify them that they need to have one more inspection. And, and what was, was there any collaboration with our planning department?
They have a set of four plans.
They have, when did they receive this set of the four plans?
That was delivered by Mr. Jujo.
Mr. Jujo?
Yep, the owner.
Who's Mr. Jujo?
He's the owner. I had, I had consulted with Ralph Page of the Planning Board, and first of all, this is prior to any special permit being issued. And they have no evidence, according to Mr. Page, the Planning Board has no evidence of anything, site plan review, or anything being issued, because this business has been in there for a long time. So, what are they going to compare it to? They don't have anything to compare it to. There's no records up there.
Okay, but that still doesn't, there's certain things that need to be done in a very methodical way.
Yeah. Mr. Page absolutely said to me, they don't need that. The Planning Board, we don't need that.
Is Mr. Page, who's, who's their chair?
He's on the planning board.
Though, I would think you would go through their chair.
I don't know who it is now.
Isn't that Michael Carabata?
Yes.
Michael Carabata? So, it probably would have been better if you had a conversation with Mr. Carabata. Through council, with regards to liquor licenses, when there is a change in occupancy, do we need to do anything on being the license, the issue?
There is a requirement that the location that is licensed, that a plan be filed with the license that's approved for the location of tables, bars, and other equipment and materials within the licensed premises. So, to the extent that the licensed premises is altered, removing the walls, relocating So, to the extent that the licensed premises is altered, removing the walls, relocating a bar, uh, increasing, um, seating capacity.
Uh huh.
Then there would be a requirement on the license holder to come back to the board with an updated plan for the board's review and approval with the new license.
So, seeing that that has not been done, what do you advise would be the board's next step? I, I would assume we need to invite them in.
I don't know, there, if, if I may through the chair, the only thing is, I believe you said they actually reduced their capacity.
They did.
They reduced their capacity.
But there was a wall taken down.
My understanding is that they removed or altered the interior structure by removing walls and relocating. So.
So, by going in?
The plan that the board has.
Right.
Is probably, based on the Building Commissioner's statements, not an accurate representation of the premises that is currently being used by the licensee, and the licensee is required to file that plan for approval with the board. So, at a minimum, the board should probably consider sending a notice to the licensee that he's in, it's understanding that he has altered the interior of the premises, that if that is the case, he needs to submit to the board for a, uh, updated plan of the interior of the licensed premises for the board's review and approval. And, and come before him and ask whatever questions you may have with respect to the operation.
Okay, did you get that, Nick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so can you take care of that? And should we put them on our next agenda for the twenty-seventh, which is our next meeting? Okay.
Through the, through the chair.
Yes.
The numbers, as Dan Helyer did state, the numbers did decrease in the overall capacity of the facility.
Right.
And I, I, I spoke with Mr. Jujo Tony several times.
Okay.
And he's always been extremely forthcoming, and I think when he was speaking, he provided us the information in a timely fashion, once he realized he needed to provide it.
Okay.
But, um, the, the capacity of the barroom itself, he removed three function, or two function rooms.
Right.
So, the barroom capacity, actually, the barroom itself increased, although the overall capacity of the facility decreased, but.
The barroom function increased?
The barroom size.
Site for the numbers?
The number of individuals that can actually stand at the bar and be in that barroom has increased, which I believe for your concern and the liquor license, that's, that's where you guys need to, to, to see the plans and understand what, what the change was.
Alright, so we'll, we'll invite them in on the twenty-seventh, and, um, Nick will send them a letter with regards, yes, sir?
If I might also, there is a, a secondary issue, um, to be considered, which is the board's requirement that food service be provided during hours of operation of the liquor establishment. That has been in the past, a position that the, the licensing authority has taken with respect to all, um, liquor establishments, um, serving food in the, in the community. And, um, that may or may not be an issue that's a present concern, but if it is, you should be notified to come in and explain the hours of operation and the food that's offered during the hours that he's there.
That's common for all the restaurants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is there anything else that you'd like to add, sir?
Um, I don't believe so. I just wanna keep you guys on schedule here, but you're doing a very good job, Dan. If I don't move quick, it'd be off schedule. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. I'll look for, uh, the approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of open session minutes for February, uh, fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
May through the chair, before we do that, is that just the two of us?
It is just the two of us.
Okay.
And at some point, maybe we could get all of the minutes caught up, so that, um, maybe we do a little session, so that we're up to, uh, May.
Okay.
And perhaps get that going a little faster.
Uh, so moved?
Okay, and I'll. You can't second, only becau, only because you weren't there. Yeah, only because you weren't there, it'll come. We'll get them all taken care of. So, I'll second out of necessity, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the executive session minutes, I'll entertain a mo, from February fourth, two thousand and four, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to accept them.
So moved.
I'll second out of necessity, um, discussion, um, there was a correction, a minor correction, that was, um, where one line's going to be, um, removed.
Yes.
And just make sure that that's known, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's done. Now, uh, we'll go to the annual town report, two thousand and thirteen, and I'll go to Nick for that.
Madam Chair, I just wanna report to the board that, uh, the, they are off, uh, that the reports, uh, should be here by the end of the week, uh, physically, and that they will be handed out, um, with the help of students at Monday's annual town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, but, yeah, after this meeting, it will be, um, um, my desire to post an electronic version on the website, uh, probably tomorrow, and, um, that I encourage, that's just another reason to come to town meeting, get your annual town report. Um, that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay, and we'll get a copy of that, correct?
You will.
Okay, um, boards and commissions, I try to, uh, keep this on here. Um, there was a gentleman, um, by the name of Jerry Saletti, who approached me, who was interested in being on the LCAT, um, commission, um. The, the, the LCAT one, though, there's, we've got the cable advisory that we're on, that we do together, and then there's the LCAT.
Oh, I wasn't aware that he was, okay.
Okay, that's okay, chime in anytime, Dan. Um, so he's interested in being on that LCAT, um, commission, so I would, um, entertain a motion to have him added to that. He is a, um, United, retired United States postal worker who have, finds himself with some time. He is, uh, volunteering currently on the council advisory committee, and he's being a very active member, and so I certainly would, uh, recommend him.
So moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, uh, will you send him a notice? Okay, there, is there anything else, um, I know that you have a topic that you wanted to, to speak on?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Uh, under old business, I'd like, uh, make a motion for the Board of Selectmen as appointed authority, effective immediately, reinstate Officer Michael Calcasola to the East Long Meadow Police Department to his original status.
I will second for discussion. Um, original, wait a minute. Attorney Dunnehugh, is this something that should be discussed in open session?
To the extent that you're going to be talking about materials that would, if you're going to be talking about materials that would be in his personnel file, then perhaps it should, should be an executive session. But if the discussion is just whether or not the board intends to consider the motion, without getting into the specifics of the underlying history of the event, no, that could be in the discussion.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions. So, the motion was to consider him back to his original position?
Yes.
Through council, would this mean, by accepting this motion, would this mean that there would be, um, back pay? Going back, or would this just be, mean that he would be first on the civic ser, civil, civil service?
We, no, it would do neither.
I'm, I'm coming to you.
It would do neither of those. The, the board has no authority to place any individual on a, a civil service list.
Right.
Okay.
Right? My understanding, and, and if the chief were here, he could probably confirm it, but my understanding was that, um, Mr. Calcasola's appointment was conditional on, uh, three or four factors. One, passing a physical, um, test, two, passing a psychological test, three, completing the academy and being, um, completing academy and graduating from the academy, and there may have been a fourth, but I don't recall. But they were conditions, the failure to attain any one of which terminated his provisional appointment to the East Long Meadow force. And even though the, 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 um, town had nothing to do with any of the events that occurred at the academy, because of the events that occurred at the academy, Mr. Calcasola did not, did not complete the, that academy. And so, his employment with the town being provisional was terminated when it became impossible for him to complete the academy to which he was sent.
Through the chair?
Yes, and I have a question after you, and, and we need to get to, uh, Selecky Federicii also, so go ahead.
Mr. Calis, Calcasola was, first, he got the best mark on his test. He got illegally separated because he wanted his appeal. That allows, which I have a letter right here, that was sent to, uh, Mr. Federicii when he was the chairman, that Police Officer Michael Calcasola requests for reinstatement to the East Long Meadow Police Department based on decision of the MPTC. This form right here, which is Form ten, from Civil Service, which I'd been in contact with, said that this should have been made out after he won his appeal, and this should have been sent down to those people. And I talked to the lady as, as early as before the meeting, cause she called me back. So, it's up to us to do the right thing, because Mr. Calcasola was wrong in what happened to him. He won his appeal, he went through the legal channel, and he should be reinstated as a first officer back on the force during this time.
Okay.
The only point I'm trying to make is that, on the facts that were in existence in connection with his appointment to the force, he did not comply with the conditions that he was required to meet when he was appointed. It's no different than if he had failed the psychological exam, and then now later someone said, oh, well, you, you passed the exam. The list, his appointment ended, his ability to become a, in a, a police officer in East Long Meadow still exists if he's placed on a new civil service list for appointment. But right now, there's no vacancy, as I understand it, in the department.
Through, through the chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunnehugh, he won his appeal, he went through, uh, wait, let me talk, okay, Paul?
Okay.
He won his appeal through the legal channels of, of how our government runs it. That didn't take him off the civil service list. All, all that did, when you win an appeal, that puts you back to the regular status that you were when you got dumped from the academy, and he won his appeal.
Okay.
So, you don't go, you don't.
I could address this.
By, by.
Okay.
This was initially handled by Labor Council, and Labor Council has more in-depth analysis with respect to this particular situation, and I, I think that if you brought Labor Council in, they could explain the situation to you much, in much more detail than I can. I am giving you my understanding of Mr. Calcasola's situation. I understand he won his appeal, but the winning of his appeal had nothing to do with anything that the town of East Long Meadow did with respect to offering him a position. He just was unable to meet the conditions that the town offered. The town has indicated to his council that if Mr. Calcasola, if a list is called for from civil service for another vacancy in the department, and Mr. Calcasola were one of the top three on that list, and it was one vacancy we're filling, or top six, if there were two, five, if there were two vacancies we're filling, that he would be considered just like any other candidate for this. All the town has said, and, and, and you're in the board, so you can make your determination, but all the town has said to Mr. Calcasola is, we offered you a job, subject to A, B, and C, you were not able to comply with A, B, and C through no fault of anything that the town did, you just couldn't do it, and therefore, we filled your position based on your inability to meet the conditions.
Through the chair.
Well, wait, wait, Billy, I, I.
I want to say what I.
I, I, I do know that you wanna say something, but Mr. Federicii has been waiting for, for a little bit, since the beginning, so I just wanna give him an opportunity to say something as well.
No, I just wanted to say that, that, as Mr. Dunnehugh said, and, and going down this path is not in, a good idea for the town, because, as Mr. Dunnehugh said, he had a couple of requirements to meet, to become a police officer. So, he was never a police officer in town, he was a conditional candidate, he had an issue with the, um, with the academy, so once he was knocked out of the academy, we could not hire him, because he did not meet our requirements. So, we can't hire him back, as far as I know, because he was never an employee of the town. He was a conditional employee while he was in the academy. He did not make it through the academy, our town has nothing to do with civil service and the academy and what happened there, and until he comes up on another list, there's absolutely no way we can hire him, and you'll be happy to talk to Labor Council about that, to find that out.
Okay, however, if we were able, uh, through, asking through council, if we were able to reins, I guess it would be, not reemploy, but reinstate him as a candidate for a future, can, can we do that for a few? Cause we are about to hire again, I believe, for the, for the department.
But if he does a show of words.
Wait, 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 yes.
If he's on the next list.
Well, he would be on the list because of?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
No.
The, the list may have expired.
Right.
The lists for civil service only last for.
Two years.
A period of time, unless they're extended. And so, if Mr. Calcasola was on a prior list, and that list has expired, which I believe it has, and he did not take the next exam to be on the new list, then you call for a civil services, he will not be on it.
Nick, you pulled the civil service list, was his name on it?
No.
And, and if I may through the chair, I don't believe it's our responsibility to fill out this form and get him back on the civil service list. I may be wrong about that, but that's not, that's, that had nothing, the civil service, the, the trial, or whatever it was, with civil service versus him, had absolutely nothing to do with the town. We, all we were, were the employing, we were the employing body of the person who in theory graduated from the academy. He never did that, and if you're think, if you're, if, if you're suggesting that we put someone on, on a payroll at X number of dollars a week, where he can do absolutely nothing in the town until he goes through twenty weeks of the academy, and the academy doesn't start till August, September, October, feel free to spend X number of dollars to have somebody sitting around collecting a check from the town when they're not entitled to it.
Through the chair.
Yes.
That's your opinion, Ed, he's not entitled to it.
No, that's the fact.
But I'm gonna tell you what, I'm gonna tell you what it says in this letter right here. Based on the bub finer of facts, the committee makes the following rule of law. From, from these people that all signed this, there were five people on the committee, four of them voted for him to come back. He cannot lawfully be separated from the academy for that which he was not on notice. Subject to all applicable eligibility requirements, student Officer Calcasola may enroll in future MPTC.
Right.
Basic Recruit Academy class at a location other than Western Mass MTC Police Academy, because the guy got railroaded there.
Right, but through the chair.
That's why they want him to go somewhere else.
He, yes, that's fine, he can, he can go to any academy he wants, with the exception of the Western Mass one. We cannot hire him back until he makes it through that academy, until he shows up on the list and makes it through the academy. We can't arbitrarily hire somebody who is not in a position to take a policeman's job in town. It, I don't care what that says, that has nothing to do with the town of East Long Meadow. That's civil service versus the academy, nothing to do with the town of East Long Meadow.
Madam Chairman?
Uh.
Let, let me just fill.
Can I ask council a question, please? By filling out this form, sir, does this, uh, well, you probably haven't seen the form. So, if we fill the, this, well, this is the first I've seen of it, did you see it before?
No.
Okay.
That's not what I'm, I don't believe.
Well, the, if we fill out this form, that would get him back on the civil service list, is that correct? And does that, does that obligate us to, to be the hiring entity? Or does that just get him back on the list? And where did this come from?
This came from, uh, the, um.
Civil?
No, the lady I talked to today, the.
Oh, the lady from civil service that you were saying earlier, okay.
And if I may through the chair, we're getting ourselves in deep trouble here if we don't get labor involved in this, because we're making decisions that we shouldn't be making without more details and more information from people that actually know the, the process.
Through the chair. I, I don't know where this form is generated from, or who's responsible to file it, but the second line here says to be filled out in duplicate, and all forms sent to the Human Resource Division as, and, and approved copy will be forwarded to the appointing authority.
Right.
So, it look, you're the appointing authority.
Right.
So, it looks as, it would seem to me, based on that language, that this is not a form that is to be filled out by the Board of Selectmen, it's the appointing authority, but a form to be either filled out by the employee, the ex-employee.
Uh huh.
Or by, um, the academy, perhaps. But I, I can't say with any definitiveness that the board doesn't sign it, just reading it, it doesn't make sense that the board would be the person signing this, since the board had no involvement in any of the actions or decisions that took place with respect to the, uh, termination from the academy.
Okay, so with regard to the, I, I'll come right to, back to you, um, Selecky Gorman. With regard to the motion that had, that is before us, if, if it were to pass. With regard to the motion that is before us, if it were to pass, what would it exactly mean?
It would make a mess. It would create a situation where now you would have the town looking to try to appoint someone to a vacancy that's already been filled through the civil service process. You don't have a vacancy in the department, you would be creating a new vacancy, and arguably, you now have an officer who's on the payroll, who is not going to be attending an academy until he can get into an academy, number one, and number two, is going to be getting compensation from the town until that point.
So can, can it be, okay?
Let me just, in addition, in order to appoint an officer to the department, there needs to be a process approved where the candidates are approved by the authority and that approval sent to civil service or the HRD department, which is other flip-flop name for civil service...
Okay.
Where they review the appointments to make sure that all of the conditions were required. Right now, that list from which Mr. Calcasola was a candidate has expired. The vacancy that existed, I believe, has been filled, and there's no mechanism under civil service for this employee to be appointed unless he himself appeals to civil service for some remediation, some action on their part to correct, quote-unquote, "the injustice" that he believes was performed in connection with his situation. And if civil service were to say, "Okay, you're going to be tops on the next list that goes out," then they could, they could do that under, there's an equitable authority that they have under one of the special acts that were adopted years ago. But civil service rules, regulations, and requirements, the town is subject to them, but you can't alter them.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that your vote would be effective, other than just to create an issue of, "Well, I have a right to do this."
But through the board?
Yeah.
That is not Mr. Casasola's problem, that's the town's problem. Because they shouldn't have appointed anybody, and you can throw your hands up all you want, Paul. They shouldn't have appointed anybody in the beginning until they, until they found out what happened to Mr. Casasola's appeal. He won his appeal. You don't go in there and win an appeal and then just throw you out the door. They got to reinstate the guy to his original status, and they should have not have put up another things to hire two people until they find out, found out about his, his...
I've answered that question, I believe, already. I can't, I'm not going to say the same thing over again, but the provisional appointment was, the appointment was provisional. It was conditional, while Han, Mr. Calcasola, performing three things.
And he got let go illegally. You're a lawyer. You're a lawyer. You know what that word "illegal" means?
No, what they said was, what they said in the decision, to be fair, was that what Mr. Calcasola did was wrong, and it was a safety violation, but because the academy gave him an outdated book that didn't specify particularly that if you did this action, it was going to be a safety violation, terminating him was wrong. That's what they said.
And it also said, tell the rest of the story, Mr. Donahue. It also said that Mr. Casasola did not lie or pre-fabricate anything as, as the instructor there said he did.
But that was a second issue.
There's still two issues.
Decision's there.
Okay. So if I may, if I may, is there, I guess the question, is there a vehicle where we could make him a candidate for the next available...
If he is not on the list currently with civil service, the town doesn't have any ability to place him on that list.
Okay.
It's my understanding of the civil service law.
Okay.
But I would defer to Labor Council on that issue, but that's my understanding.
So do I, seeing...
Let me, could I say something?
Yes.
When I talked to the lady, Tae, from civil service, she said they can stay on for two years. So he got reinstated. He got reinstated. That allows him to be on that list for two years from the date, let me finish. And he has five years to file an appeal.
Okay, I don't know what, I don't know what any of those, those timeframes are, except...
I do, because I talked to the lady.
But the, but the application and the request to be reinstated on the list is the burden, I believe, I may be wrong, but is the burden of the, of the provisional employee who is being knocked off the list because the list is expiring.
It's not him being reinstated on the list, it's being reinstated in his position when that, when he won his appeal. And that's what should happen. You don't win your appeal, Mr. Donahue, and then just, nothing happens.
Mr. Gorman, I agree with you. If the action that was being appealed was an action that was taken by the Board of Selectmen of East Long Meadow.
So it was a third person.
If it was determined that the Board of East Long Meadow Selectmen did something wrong with respect to Mr. Calcasola being appointed, and he appealed that decision, and he got a judgment from a court or from an administrative agency that said, "Board, you were wrong, reinstate him absolutely or absolutely right." But this is not an action where the Board of Selectmen were involved in this at all.
Nobody said they were.
Except, well, I'm trying to explain to you the point, your point about reinstatement.
Yep.
I don't mean to shush you, but...
It's an action by a third party unrelated to the Board of Selectmen saying, "You're reinsta," you can be, you have the right to go back to that, to that school and graduate if you choose to do so. But there's no way that that board has the authority to order him reinstated to the, to the police department in East Long Meadow because he hasn't complied with the conditions and because there's not a vacancy, and because the civil service requirements are that to be appointed to a police department that's a civil service police department in Massachusetts. You have to come off a valid and existing civil service list. The burden, I would think, and it's just my, my opinion on this based on past experiences, is that the burden, when Mr. Calcasola won his appeal, would have been on he and his counsel to file a request for reinstatement to the civil service list in Boston by the civil service.
Here's a letter to Paul Federici saying, "Police Officer Michael Casasola requests for reinstatement to East Long Meadow Police Department based on the decision of MTC. October 29, 2013."
If I may, through the chair.
Yes.
A letter from the attorney has absolutely nothing to do with the fact that we cannot hire him back because he never met our requirements. If you want to have police officers skip the academy and just go on the payroll, that's fine, but in his case, that's what would be happening. He never made it through the academy. I don't care about the reason. All he had to do for the town...
Well, I do, Paul.
Well, I know, but all he had to do for the town's purposes, and that's all I'm concerned about, is the town, is you have to do three things, pass a psychological test, a physical test, and pass the academy. He did not pass the academy for whatever reason. Therefore, he was not qualified to be a candidate for the police department. We can't arbitrarily put him on until he gets back on the list and goes back to the academy. Then if you, if we choose him in the next interview and he goes back to the academy, then, I'm not concerned about Mr. Rook's letter, to be honest with you.
I am, Paul, because back when you were a selectman, you and Jimmy Driscoll voted for this man.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, now, here we go. Now we're back to Team Corrupt.
No, 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 please.
But it was, it was up to the selectmen to give the civil service his status on where he was.
No, it wasn't.
So you're telling me the appeal, the appeal process, you're just throwing it out the window. It don't count for nothing.
It's not our appeal, it's his appeal.
He did appeal it.
His appeal to civil service has nothing to do with the town.
He did the legal thing.
We are not, it's not the town's responsibility.
Both of you, could you, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Please speak through the chair and not to each other.
And be, he's asking us to do things that we have no authority to do, as far as, as far as helping him get back on the civil service list. That's his problem, that's something he has to settle. The town has nothing to do with that.
Okay. Well, I heard what you said. Selectman Gorman, is there something else you want me to say?
Yes, it is our problem, because we could have a suit on our hand because of this, and we're trying to avoid it. And all we got to do is do the right thing with this appeal. This kid went through all the legal process that was available to him, and he did what he was supposed to do.
Except pass the academy.
We didn't do, we didn't do what we were supposed to do and notify the civil service that what, what happened, and he got his, and he won his appeal. We didn't do our part of the job.
We weren't supposed to notify civil service, he was.
Wait. Attorney Donahue?
Yes, ma'am.
This is where we are. My understanding from my fellow selectmen is that this gentleman would like to get back on the civil service list. We don't have that in our authority to do that.
Right.
This, this thing, this form is supposed to have been filled out by the individual, by the selectman?
The individual.
Wait, wait, wait.
Mr. Donahue just said we weren't the authority.
Paul, please.
Well, you know, we're going around and around in circles here, and it's ridiculous.
Well, you know what? We're trying to get somewhere here, okay? All right, so this needs to be filled out by the individual, correct?
Well...
But it says, "Signed by the..."
Just to clarify, it's a piece of paper with no indication who's supposed to fill it out. I would think that it's part of a larger package that may have more information with respect to it. It may not be, but there's nothing there that really gives any direction as to who's responsible for it. But since a copy is supposed to be forwarded to the appointing authority, it would seem to me that the appointing authority, being the Board of Selectmen, are not the ones who are required to fill it out.
Okay.
But I don't know what the instructions for the filling out of that say.
But it's, it says down here, lower on the bottom, "Signature of the officer authorized by law to make appointment." So it looks like they're asking us to make an appointment to him, and if we don't, I think we have to wait until we have an opening before we can make an appointment.
No, we don't.
No?
He should be put back in his original position.
He didn't have a position.
When he got ousted out of thing. Because he, if he didn't get ousted out of the academy, he would have been thrown and he would have been a cop today.
Okay.
Right.
But, so all Mr. Casasola could do was go through due process, which is what he did, and he won his case.
And now he gets to be put back in the academy, once he gets hired for a job.
So, so you're asking us to hire him?
We're asking, he should be...
But he would still have to go through the academy.
Right.
Yes, he will. You don't have to do the physical part. Will you keep quiet while I'm talking, please? Give me the courtesy.
Okay. I would ask both to do that.
He don't have to take the physical or the psychological thing. And Mr. Casasola was first in his class as far as passing everything.
Okay, I heard, I heard you on that. So if, Selectman Federici, if we were to reinstate him, he would still need to go through the academy, correct?
But I believe if you reinstate him, you'll have to start paying him. And it's, like I said, this is something we should table until we talk to Labor Council.
And...
Because you're, you're on a slippery slope here, and you're going to get the town in a large financial problem.
And my understanding is that the vacancy that Mr. Calcasola was to fill has been filled.
Right.
And so there is no vacancy now. If you're going to appoint him, you're either going to have to create a new position, or you're going to have to appoint him and say that the existing employee who was appointed instead, when he failed to meet the requirements, is now no longer going to be a police officer in East Long Meadow, which is going to create some issues. My suggestion would be...
What about the appointment of the next future? And so he would not be on our payroll, but the next one that came up?
Well, he's got, first of all, he has to get on the list issued by civil service, and he has to be one of the candidates in the top tier of that list for you even to be able to consider him.
So could we make a motion, amend the motion that's on the floor right now to, to have those stipulations added to that, and would we be okay?
I don't think so. I think you muddy the waters. You could, you could say something to the extent that in the event that Mr. Calcasola is on a list, and the next list issued by civil service to fill a vacancy in the East Long Meadow Police Department, that he will be considered, along with any other candidates, for that position, you could make that motion.
That's what we've been doing anyways.
Doesn't commit anything, and he has to get on the list, and then he has to be, in your opinion, the most qualified candidate of those who are applying.
Would you accept that amendment to your motion?
I'd like to read something first, and a letter from the 29th.
Okay.
That was sent to Mr. Federici. "Now that the decision of the MPTC is that Director McKenzie was wrong in separating Police Officer Casasola from the academy, I am hereby demanding that this police officer status be reinstated and that he be permitted to attend the next available academy sponsored by the MPTC, sent on the 29, 2013. In the correct, to correct this injustice today, in the full public view, I think we should put Mr. Casasola back as first candidate for East Long Meadow."
I think, if I may, that we should wait and talk to Labor Council, because that's who we were going on the advice of when we did not do that, because we had no authority to do that. We cannot put him back anywhere until he meets the qualifications of the town, which is pass an academy, but get chosen, get interviewed, pass, pass all his tests, and pass an academy. He hasn't done that, so we cannot, as far as I know, put him on, in any position, because he's not qualified as, as of right now, until he meets all the requirements.
But, but, Selectman Federici, okay, one of the things that we can do is amend the recommendation that if he is on that list, and if he does make it through the academy, that we would consider him. I, I...
Well, we would do that anyways, though.
But I don't have a problem with him being the first, if we consider him first. But I don't know if that's with this civic center, yeah.
The issue that you have, and the reason I didn't say that you would suggest that you put in the motion that you would appoint him, is because if you get a list and he's not the top candidate on the list...
Right.
Then you need to submit reasons for appointment, or reasons, and/or reasons for bypass of the people who are ahead of him on the list. And that brings in the whole structure of the civil service rules and regulations with respect to that. A vote by the board that would say, "If Mr. Calcasola is on a list for appointment to an opening that occurs in the future in the East Long Meadow Police Department, he will be considered for that position like any other candidate on that list," gives him as much rights as he probably would have gotten if he'd gone to a court after this and asked for some type of remediation to the actions by the training council in throwing him out.
Okay. Selectman Gorman, would you consider that amendment to your motion?
No, I, I think, in all due process, in all fairness to Mr. Casasola, I think he should be put on, right now, immediately, first on the list, because he, they illegally let the boy go from that academy. If he made it through the academy, we wouldn't be in this situation. He filed all due process the way he should have. That's the only alternative he had. We chose not to send his status to the civil service, which the town of East Long Meadow should have done.
No, that wasn't our job.
To let the civil service...
Listen to Jim.
Will you be quiet for one second?
Jeez.
You're not the chairman now. And, and that, that boy got railroaded, and we all know the situation in West Springfield and what's going on. There's a lot of hanky panky going, they get a lot of trouble there.
I'm going to caution you.
This is what always bothers me now.
Please, I'm going to caution you on speaking about things hearsay, about West Springfield, okay?
Hearsay.
Okay, well, I'm going to caution you on that. So what we have in front of us, we do, I'm going to ask one more time, Selectman Gorman, would you consider amending your motion? At least, one of the things that could happen with amending the motion is that at least he would get the consideration.
No, I, I, no.
You're stuck on that?
Nope. I think that boy deserves proper justification for what went on.
Okay, but here, here's the thing. If, if we do, if this vote does carry, that means that he would be on our payroll effective immediately, and we could have to pay him, and he's getting paid and he's not even gone through the, through the academy, and I...
He wouldn't get paid from the town of East Long Meadow.
Yes, he would.
Until he got out of...
Yes, he would.
Excuse me. Yes, he would. It would be from, we actually pay him.
If, if he made it through, Madam Chairman...
Yes.
We would be paying him anyway. He got a misjustice done to him.
I, and I, and I totally get that. I, I get that. Here's what the situation is, and when we're looking at the total picture, Selectman Gorman, we have all, we all have budgets that we have to live with. That position has been budgeted and filled. We don't have the additional funds to pay somebody right now, and we don't even know and we don't even know when the next academy is. So we would be paying them from now until he passes the academy if we were to pass the motion right now as it stands.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We do have two people that are gonna go through academy very shortly.
That hasn't come up yet. We haven't, we haven't brought that up yet.
But you're saying we don't have the money, we're gonna do it to two other people because of the promotions.
Well, yeah, well, and that's what I'm saying, when it, when that comes up, certainly we could do, do that then. As opposed to doing it right now. You not feeling me?
I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, this is wrong, what we're doing to this boy. If it was my son or your son or Paul's son, they wouldn't be sitting here with the same attitude as they got right now. They would be pushing for their son, knowing he got mistreated. You can, a, a kid can only do one thing when something happens like that. Alls he can do is appeal their case, that's all he can do. There's another, no alternative for him. And the kid did that and won his case. So what other alternative does the boy have? They should put him back in the spot that he came out of.
Okay.
I'm gonna make one response to that.
Okay.
And my response is that, in the years that I've been town council here, I have always made the representation to the board of what I think the law is and the way it best applies to the town. And I would say to you that if my son, if I had a son, were in the same situation, I would be telling the board the same thing I'm telling you today because that's my understanding of what the situation is and the impact on the community. Now, as I said earlier today, all I do is advise the board.
Right.
I don't have a horse in this race. So you can make whatever decisions you want. But trying to appoint Mr. Calcasola to a position that is, doesn't exist in East Long Meadow, you don't have a vacant police position.
Right.
If you're gonna bring him back, he has to get appointed through the civil service process.
I understand that.
And his response, if he wants to overturn what the board did in filling that vacancy when he was removed from the academy, is an action through civil service for some type of corrective action. But it, it's not something necessarily that the board can rectify. And bear in mind, and I know you don't agree with this, Mr. Gorman, but the action here is not the result of anything that the Board of Selectmen did or was involved in. They were just an observer like everyone else and reacted to what the, the school did with respect to their, their candidate for employment. That was it. I, I hear what you're saying. But my advice to you would be the same no matter who is here. Okay, it's, it's not based on, on any personal emotion or feeling one way or the other about this situation. Just wanna clarify that.
But through the board, I gotta say that he's not looking to oust the kid that took his place. Alls he's looking to do is get on the next list. Whoever, whoever East Long Meadow hires, he should be first on the list for, for hiring.
But what I'm saying to you is the action to do that, nothing that you do can affect that. It's up to Mr. Calcasola through his counsel, and you read Mr. Wood's letter about demanding that he be reappointed and that wasn't done. But the action should be, if it isn't already in the process, some appeal to civil service to exercise their equitable power to correct an injustice if they can establish the civil service that there was an injustice done. If they can do that, civil service has the authority to appoint Mr. Calcasola to a new list that he never took the examination for to correct that injustice. But that's a decision of civil service. It's not a decision the Board of Selectmen can make. And voting to put him back to the position he would've had if he hadn't been thrown out of the school for whatever reason, is only gonna create unnecessary expense and problems potentially for the town. My suggestion is to let Mr. Calcasola run his course with civil service. He can get his name on the, on the list to be submitted back here to the board for consideration for appointment. You do appoint him, you appoint him with the same three conditions. The only difference would be the, the academy he has to go to has to be somewhere outside of Hanson County. You can get him back on the force if that's the case. But you can't, you can't just make a motion here to put him back and have him be a police officer. It's, it can't happen. It's not the, it's not the way the structure is. We don't have the power.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Dunnehill. What good is the appeal process for, for a young kid that got railroaded out of something? What good is the appeal process? What, what, yes, I'm asking you, you're a lawyer. What good is the appeal process?
Well, him going through the appeal process means that he can go back to an academy.
Yeah, if he hadn't won that, if he hadn't won that, he would never be able to go to any academy and he would never be able to be a police officer.
You're exactly right, but he, but if he didn't, but he did, he did win it.
Yes.
So that's what the.
So that, that should allow him to go back to the spot he came from in, in the, in the academy. At that time, he should, he was on a list, he was number one on that list.
I don't know if he was number one, I don't worry he was on the list, I'll take your word for that.
He got the best mark on the test.
But, but his academy, the academy that the, that the Board of Selectmen appointed, required him to complete, was that academy that he was thrown out of.
Yep.
Once that academy completed and there was a graduation, he wasn't part of that graduation, his conditional employment, the terms of that conditional employment ended and he was no longer eligible under the appointment that the board made off the list that he was chosen from. It's no different, as I said before, if he had failed the physical examination. He would then have not been eligible to be an officer, even if later on he could pass the physical.
Because if he failed the physical, he wouldn't be able to appeal it. He, 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 he got illegally thrown out of academy, illegally. I get all this documentation, I told you that.
I, I, it, it, it was, I don't know that it was illegal, but there's a question as to whether it was appropriate for him to be thrown out based on the information that he was given. And even taking that as a given, the real issue here is you're asking the board to correct the wrong that they don't have the, the authority to correct. Mr. Calcasola's, once he won the appeal of his being thrown out of the academy, if he wanted to be on the civil service list, and my understanding is that he did not take the next list, that the list he was on and what he was appointed from expired. There was then a new group of candidates who took the exam and passed it and they were ranked.
Right.
After he won his appeal, what, what would have been the more appropriate way for him to go would be to petition civil service based on the decision that he got from the academy that he was wrongly terminated, to put him back on the civil service list with the same type of score that he had from the prior list. Now, he may have even done that. I don't know. But if he didn't do that, that's not something that the Board of Selectmen should put on their shoulders and say, we have to correct that wrong. The board did everything that they represented to Mr. Calcasola they would do to allow him to be an officer in the department. He failed to meet one of the conditions, not through any fault of the board and apparently based on the decision, not through fault that they felt was justifiably his. But the situation occurred. And now because of the statutory structure of civil service, the responsibility now is for the employee to move to have that wrong corrected.
Mr. Dunnehill.
Yes, sir.
The lady I talked to at civil service, two hours before I come down here, said it was the authority, which are the selectmen, should've sent the letter to the civil service letting them know of, of his, that he won his appeal of his status. We failed to do that. We, we as selectmen have to sign the bottom of that paper.
I, I would submit.
The lady went through every line with me on that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest to you, I don't know who you spoke to at civil service, and I'm not sure what the conversation was.
Mrs. Edwards.
Between the parties at civil service. But I will suggest to you that the Civil Service Commission was aware that Mr. Calcasola was not appointed to the police department in East Long Meadow because they had to approve the, the appointment of the provisional to fill his spot when he was removed from the school. So the extent, and, and even if that letter were sent in, I don't know what effect it would have in changing any of the things we're talking about. If Mr. Calcasola himself hadn't moved to be placed on the list that's already expired.
Because he was waiting for his status to be sent to the civil service, so they knew where his status was. We failed to do that.
Well, I'm gonna tell you.
He did everything legally he was supposed to do.
You read the letter from Attorney Rook, and I will tell you that Attorney Rook is a very competent and educated attorney in his civil service procedures. And if there was something that should have been done by the town to protect his client's right, you read his letter and you know how, how aggressive he is in, in protecting his client's right, he would've said to the town, you need to file this information in order to protect my client's rights. And that didn't happen, so that leads me to believe that this may be something that might have to be filed by somebody, whether it's the board or not, I don't know. But even whether it's filed or not, I don't believe it alters at all any of this discussion that I've just given you with respect to where the town and Mr. Calcasola stand or should stand.
I would like to amend the motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend that, um, if Mr. Calcasola should come up on the list, that we would support him and, um, give him full consideration. You wanna second it?
No.
I'll second the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, I believe a call for a vote on the main motion.
Oh, the motion that.
Okay.
Through the council, we're, Madam Chair, where, where the board is in that discussion, there was a motion made by Selectmen Gorman.
And seconded.
Seconded, discussion has ensued.
Mm-hmm.
The board has now just passed, uh, two to one, an amendment to the main motion.
Right.
So now the question is, does the motion that Selectmen Gorman made pass as amended, is my understanding?
There needs to be a vote on the amended motion.
On the amended, right.
Your, 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 your motion, you voted on amended Selectmen Gorman's motion.
Right, right.
So now the amendment's on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
So now it can either be more discussion on the amendment or there can be a motion to move the amendment and vote on the amendment.
Okay, is there any discussion on the amendment? No? Are you sure? Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so that carries. That doesn't mean that we can't bring it up for discussion with more information. The, with regards to this form, Attorney Dunnehill, can you find out if it is something that we could fill out? Cause if it is, it's something that we should do. We really should give this gentleman.
I'll get you the number and give you the lady's name.
Okay.
From Social Security, I mean from, uh, civil service.
Okay, if you could do that, that would be great, and Attorney Dunnehill. Um, and is it possible also that we can have, um, speak with Labor Council?
Yeah.
Um, as well? Um, and I would advi, I would think that we would have this all situated and a little better, um, that we'd be in a better place with that, that information coming forward. And I would ask that we do this prior to hiring any other, um, police officers. So that he can be considered as a candidate for that. Are we in agreement with that? You agree with that? Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on. Okay, where were we?
If I might?
Yes.
That particular form we were discussing, because it's been discussed at the meeting, all of those documents that have been discussed.
Need to be copied.
Part of, copies made and made part of amendments.
Okay. All right, um, I believe, I didn't have a copy of the form itself. And the letter.
I can give Nick what I got from.
Okay, I did give Nick a co, a copy of. I gave Lorraine, yeah.
Okay.
And that was the letter that you read, Mr. Gorman?
Yep.
Okay.
You all got them.
Okay. All right, um. Okay. I am, I know we have, I'm gonna go out of order a little bit here. I know we have our fire chief, he said he's on here for some other business. I'm gonna have him come up, cause he's been waiting extremely patiently. So we're, we're gonna have him come on up before he falls asleep.
I don't wait.
Okay. Thank you. There was no objections to moving him up, was there?
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
No, just being sure.
My, my request, um, through the National Fire Academy, they offer an executive, um, fire training officer program. Um, it's a competitive application process every year. Um, it's, uh, offers senior officers such as myself a broad perspective on various facts of fire and emergency services in the administration and of the department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it helps, uh, you know, difficult, you know, helps leaders deal with difficult adaptive problems within our, you know, our jurisdiction. And it ranges from the whole spectrum within the fire service.
Mm-hmm.
For me to send my application in, I need a, a letter of commitment from the board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it does require a couple, uh, weeks away from town. Um, one of the big advantages is that, um, travel expenses are, are covered by the Fire Academy, National Fire Academy.
Okay.
So, um, the board doesn't need to, um, worry about that. But it is, um, it is quite a, um, uh, um, program. Um, guys that have gone through it, you know, really, really have, uh, excelled in the field and, um, they are the leaders, the mentors, um, within the area, um, which is, you know, an important process. Attached with my letter was a flyer on the program.
Did you get that?
No.
No, okay. Did you get that?
No, I just got the letter.
Okay, all right, so.
I can leave you my copy here.
That would be helpful.
And maybe Lorraine can make that and pass that.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
And also on the back of that is a copy of the letter that the, the board, um, wrote last year.
Okay.
Um, with basically their commitment.
Okay.
So with the, 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 there is a deadline, um, for application. Um, everything has to be in the National Fire Academy by the middle of June.
By the middle of June, so we have a little time.
Yep.
Okay, um, what's the cost to the town?
No cost.
There's no cost at all?
No cost.
Other than paying your salary while you're gone?
Exactly. Yep. Uh, just, it's similar to the, the Massachusetts Fire Academy. I, I encourage my firefighters, call or career, um, to, you know, participate in any of the training that's out there. And ninety-nine percent of the stuff at most of the fire academies, national or mass, is, is free for the town.
Okay.
Um, which is, is, is a huge plus. I mean, the guys are really taking advantage of it.
Okay. Well, you know, I think we need to really look over that other information. We do have a little time. We will put, schedule that for our meeting on, you said mid-June?
Yep.
So the twenty-seventh? Put it out for the twenty-seventh? Okay. And, and, um, Ms. Maureen? Could you please make sure that, um, they get a copy of that, that attachment and the letter? That way we can make an informed decision.
Yep, and if any board member has a question, they can always contact.
Okay.
You guys are.
Sounds great. Thank you. Sorry for the wait.
Nope, no problem.
Okay, getting back, okay, commissions. Um, can we go to new business? Guess we, I don't know if we have him. I'm sorry, just bear with me for one moment. I see Mr. Parent there, back there, he's here for something? I see Mr. Parent there, back there, he's here for something?
Madam Chair, Mr. Parent is here to discuss the item relative to a little bit with Summers Road, I believe. And, and if there were any questions at this point, I think maybe just a bit off the cuff with the respect to the water sewer agreement, but more so with the Summers Road landfill.
Okay, the Summers Road landfill, which is what number?
Under Board of Health.
Under Board of Health.
Okay, so, without any objections, do, does anybody mind if we go to, skip to the Board of Health?
Not at all.
Okay, any objections? Okay, so we're gonna go to Board of Health next. Okay, and invite Mr. Parent. DPW?
Very nice to see you again.
Thank you, very nice to see you. Okay, you are the chair, are you ready to take those rounds, or? Just make the announcement that it's the Summers, okay, all right, just this time. Summers Road landfill, you wanted to bring us up to speed on that?
Certainly. I attempted to put about forty years of history together in about a two-page summary.
I noticed that.
I'm hopeful that you had a chance to take a look at it before the meeting tonight, so.
As much as I'd like to.
You might be a little bit up to speed. What I'm going to fold out right now is a larger copy of the figure that I believe was provided with the summary that I provided. And I will keep this, like the two-page summary, I'll keep it fairly brief and really just touch on the key points of, of the history. Part of the reason I'm here is that the site, as I understand it, really rests within the purview of two different boards.
Okay.
Since about nineteen eighty-eight, the site has been operated as a transfer station and has been operated under the authority of the Department of Public, the Board of Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to that time, the site was operated as a landfill.
Okay.
And at that point was under, and still as a site assigned, site, I believe, is under the control of the Board of Health, but the operation on a day-to-day standpoint for the last twenty-plus years has been by the Department of Public Works. So, the history, the site was, as I understand it, and this was a result of work that I had done actually a number of years ago prior to coming to the, to the town of East Long Meadow. As I understand it, the landfill was put in operation sometime around nineteen seventy-one.
Mm-hmm.
It was operated until about nineteen eighty-two is what's known as a bulky waste landfill, which is essentially a landfill for waste that couldn't be taken out with the household waste because of the size, mattresses, other large pieces of waste material that were landfilled in town. Like many landfills, the operation of that landfill was challenging. Operating a landfill is, is not an easy job. It appears that it became more and more challenging for the town. As a result of that, the town decided to get out of the bulky waste landfill business sometime around nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three. At that point, the bulky waste landfill was closed, based on records as well as based on some explorations that were done a number of years ago in that area. It appears that the landfill was closed in accordance with the standards that existed at that time, which was essentially two feet of soil material placed over the waste material.
Okay.
It was then converted to a transfer station. Even though the bulky waste landfill was closed, landfilling operations were still allowed, as I understand it, by the Board of Health until nineteen eighty-eight. The landfilling activities that were sanctioned, as I understand it, were primarily the disposal of wood waste at the rear of the landfill. And what I'll do now is just try to give you a little bit oriented on this figure. As you look across here, this diagonal line is Summers Road. Fire station is here, police station is there.
Mm-hmm.
The original landfill facility is in where you see the, the magenta area at the front of this figure. This is an aerial photograph of the overall site. Records and test pits seem to confirm that wood waste activities, landfilling activities, took place to the rear of the site.
Hmm.
And again, as I talked about, the bulky waste area being capped in accordance with the requirements that were in place at the time, essentially based on test pits throughout this magenta area. Everything looks to be what it should have been at that point.
Hmm.
Again, official operations at the, at the site were sanctioned by the Board of Health through nineteen eighty-eight. This wood waste landfilling activity continued to occur there, as I understand it. In nineteen eighty-eight, again, I think due to increasing challenges associated with operating landfill, at that point, the Board of Health decided to get out of the landfill business altogether. And at that point, closed the wood waste disposal facility as well. One area that was not, has not been formally ever presented, I think, and anything that we could find historically is an area, in an area of, of waste disposal activities. I'm hesitant, I may be even call them landfilling activities, but waste disposal activities where you see this yellow section of the site right there. And based on aerial photographs, you can take a look at aerial photographs that go back on five or ten-year increments and you could see when this area was clear, when it started to grow in again, to get a sense of activities of when things were, were happening in that area. That seemed to be happening through the nineteen seventies, maybe into the mid-nineteen eighties and that type of timeframe. Based on land, on test pitting activities, the material that's out here is, you know, we at the time, when I was working for Time Bond, had called it inert bulky waste and that just meant largely construction debris. It was concrete, it was asphalt, it was metal products, it was plastics. It was, again, materials that couldn't be landfilled or couldn't be put in household trash and whether it was sanctioned or not, got placed at that site, as best we could tell. So nineteen eighty-eight, Department of Public Works took over the site, operated the transfer station there, continues to operate the transfer station at the site today. From nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-seven, the transfer station operated. You know, there were occasionally, as you looked through the historical files, you know, again, there were housekeeping issues and things like that, but that, that's fairly typical. Nineteen ninety-seven, as I understand it, where things began to come to the head was that the fire station was constructed or was under construction.
Mm-hmm.
And again, going to the historical information, it appears that when the fire station was constructed, there was wood waste material found in the vicinity of the foundation of the, of the fire station. The material, as it's been reported, below the building and around the building was removed.
Yep.
And the site was then developed, because from a foundation standpoint, you don't want to have organic material underneath the foundation, because they could be decomposed and settled over time. After nineteen, or in nineteen seven, nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, the state became interested in the potential impacts of the landfill on the fire station. And might there be, as there often is when you have a landfill, what's known as gas migration. Landfills include methane, the methane sometimes just vents to atmosphere, but sometimes travels different distances away from the landfill. And as a result of that, I believe the town was required to install some monitoring wells in between the landfill property itself and the fire station property. And monitor those, those gas monitoring wells and periodically detected methane levels in, in those wells. Again, not surprised that this is an area adjacent to a landfill.
Mm-hmm.
There apparently were some irregularities in terms of reporting of some of those results. The results, as far as the records indicate, were taken, but they may not have been submitted to DEP and as a result of that, DEP became concerned about the site again. And at that point, as I understand it, and this is where I myself personally started to get involved, there was concern of where might the methane be coming from? Might it be coming from the landfill itself? Might it be coming from the fire station site itself?
Okay.
Because even though the organic material was removed from around the foundation itself, there may have been organic material actually remaining on the site underneath the parking lot, et cetera. So the town was really required at that point, as we're now fast-forwarding into about two thousand and four, to do two things, better understand what was happening around the fire station and to address issues, if there were issues that needed to be addressed, but then also take a look at the landfill proper and try to get an understanding of what was closed and capped and done properly and what might need to be taken care of in the future. On the fire station property itself, organic waste was found fairly extensively underneath the parking lot areas. As a result of that, the methane gas was concluded to be generated not only from the landfill, but potentially from the landfill and from the fill around the fire station. So at that point, it was necessary to do something to extract the methane right there on the site.
Hmm.
And at that point, the town installed a series of trenches filled with stone, gas extraction trenches, gas extraction wells, and a vacuum system was put in place to basically draw the methane out of the ground and to exhaust it to the atmosphere.
Oh, what year was that?
That was in two thousand and four, two thousand and five.
Okay.
And that system has been operating since that time.
Okay.
And it's been pretty successful in terms of keeping the methane levels down to a safe level. And that was a real concern about methane, is that in a confined area, it can be unsafe. In the atmosphere, it's perfectly fine. The second piece of that, then, was again, taking a look at this landfill and that's what really prompted the test pitting activities and the evaluation activities. And I already talked about a lot of that. Basically led to a conclusion that there were three parts of the landfill. The magenta part of the site that was probably in pretty good shape. The green piece where the wood waste had been, that hadn't been closed, hadn't been capped, at least very variable, some, some locations, you know, quite a bit of soil over the waste and, or over the, the wood waste, in some cases, very little soil over the wood waste. Same type of thing out in this inert bulky waste area, that there's very little cover or capping material out there.
Okay.
There was an assessment and an evaluation put together, submitted to the state back in two thousand and five. And the state really has deferred action on that since two thousand and five, which ultimately has benefited the town. Because once the town gets to a point where this site becomes officially closed, then there is a monitoring program that you're typically required to complete where you have to, the wells are largely already in place, but then you have to start monitoring those wells typically every, you know, quarterly. Depending on the results, the quarterly might back off to semi-annually, et cetera, et cetera. And those could be significant costs, they could be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of analytical cost and laboratory cost every year to collect the samples, analyze the samples. Good news is you haven't had to do that for the past eight or nine years. You will have to do that at some point in the future.
Is there a cost for those tests, by the way?
Absolutely, there, and as I said, it's significant, and if I had to pull a number off the top of my head, a typical landfill monitor, annual monitoring cost is in the range of about twenty-five thousand dollars, maybe thirty thousand dollars per year. Again, it depends on the frequency of the anal, analysis. Typically, it's more frequent early, in the early years. Once a site has been proven to be pretty stable, which this site probably is, then you can typically back off on the frequency of the, the monitoring and the analytical work, because it's, most of this has been here for a long time. What has brought this to a head right now is the town, the town DPW was required to re-permit the transfer station and you have to do that on a periodic basis, I think it's every ten years. And it was also looking to memorialize the activities that the DPW has been down doing in the site for many, many years, which is composting activities on the site where we collect leaf waste, wood waste, et cetera, and create compost that the DPW uses for, you know, restoration of growth on roadsides and construction projects and things like that. In conjunction with that, state has told us that they, they've deferred action on coming up with the final plan. But they want the final plan incorporated in the re-permitting of the site. Not to be done immediately, they've been fairly clear that they are very supportive of the concept of the town trying to do most of this work, if not all of this work themselves, doing it with the town's own forces, doing it over multiple years, doing it in phases.
Hmm.
But what they do want to do is to have a plan and, you know, an approach put together so that they and the town knows where things have to go in the future. We are in the process of putting that plan together right now. Again, we are looking, we're not looking to commit anything in fiscal fifteen. We know, you know, obviously, nothing has been budgeted in fiscal fifteen for anything related to the landfill. You know, we, we are a couple of weeks away from putting that plan together in draft form, so I can't even tell you specifically of what the concept is, probably spread this over three or four or five years. Try to reuse as much of the existing soil. The DPW has been collecting soil in that site for years and years, recognizing that this day was going to come at some point and that those materials could be used for, for shaping the site and closing and hopefully capping the site, depending on the quality of the material. So I felt it was important to bring it to your attention, because it will most definitely involve this board at some point in the future. As I said, our goal is to spread this over as many years as possible and to keep the cost of this as, as absolutely low as possible. We're optimistic that the requirement we're gonna have in terms of the, the type of capping material will not be anywhere as nearly as stringent as you would on a solid waste landfill today, where you have to put down membranes and clay and all sorts of other types of things. This is likely a silty dirt that will have to be placed over the site, probably not much, you know, more rigorous than that. But the site will have to be shaped, it'll have to be graded so that drainage, you know, drains off of the site and it doesn't pool and collect and create problems like that. So really, that's where we are, it's really to sort of give you a heads up of where we see this going and letting you know that we'll be back in front of you, I expect, sometime in the future.
Yeah, through, through the chair.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
The one on Allen Street, where is that landfill?
That's in a similar status right now. It is, at the very same time, the state required the town to assess the condition of that landfill. And I was also involved in that assessment as well. And I'll keep it short, generally, that landfill was found in pretty, to be in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
The soil cap over the top of that landfill was generally pretty good. It was two feet of soil, which basically was the requirement at that time. The, but it sort of sits there in limbo right now. The biggest concern on Allen Street right now is that site is completely grown in. You know, there's twenty, thirty-plus-year-old trees that are growing through there. Typically, you don't do that on top of a landfill.
That said, the state was leaning, and I can't guarantee it, towards, we may allow you to leave that material there,
providing you agree to manage it, so that if you have a tree that blows down on the root ball, pulls up cap material, that you put the cap material, things like that. That's, that's the direction they were indicating a number of years ago. Will they stick with that? I can't make.
You can't build on that at all?
Anything is possible. If you were to, to do something to that site, it would be very likely you would have to upgrade the quality of the cap that exists on that site to something now approaching what a state-of-the-art landfill would have for a cap. So that's, it's sort of let it lie, manage it, maintain it. You may not have to do very much to it. If you want to come in and do something with it, there's a benefit, because there is property there. Some of it which you own, some of it which you don't own, which is another problem. About half of the Allen Street site you own, about half of it is privately owned at this point.
Yeah, what I wanted to ask you, Mr. Parent, is that house that's out there, they said they couldn't sell that house because of the gas problem back there, the methane gas problem?
There, I can't.
Sure. Yeah, but yet someone lived in that for all those years, you know?
I can't speak to whether they could sell it or not, that's, you know, that's, I'm not a real estate expert. What I can indicate was my recollection, and it's been years since I worked on it, but I don't believe there were gas migration issues shown in the vicinity of the house. There were some towards the rear of the property, there were some to the front of the property, but specifically around the house, based on wells that were put in there. I don't recall there being issues there.
What's the reason the town can't sell that house then?
Can, can we defer that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I may through the chair, and I don't know, Bill, if you know this, but in Long Meadow, didn't they put a solar farm on top of that dump that's down behind, like right off the highway there?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, and I don't know how overgrown this one is on Allen Street, but just out curiosity, I don't know if that's something that could be. And I know there's people harvesting, there's, there's groups that harvest that methane too. They cap the, they cap the things and sell it, so, you know.
So I, I know a little bit about a lot of different things.
Okay, okay.
I'll touch on a couple of those. One, as I understand, the methane recovery business, one, it's primarily reliant on trash more like household waste. Where, where it's degrading, degrading at a relatively fast rate of, of speed. The, the wood waste that's sitting near the fire station, it doesn't produce much methane. And quite honestly, the main reason the methane was a problem is because it gets, it gets trapped by the pavement. And the pavement is essentially a cap over the top of it and it builds up underneath the pavement. So if, if that site was open dirt, the methane levels would probably be lower because it's naturally ventilating through. So I, in terms of the feasibility of extracting methane, in the area, I believe, North Hampton was doing it at one point.
Yeah.
I think with some success, but again, they were in the middle of an active landfill and, and landfills, as I understand it, have a tendency, they produce more gas early in their life and less and less gas as things go on, because again, you're, you're decomposing. So this is a, you know, as landfills go, a fairly old landfill. Whatever gas you're gonna produce here has been tapered off quite a bit.
Maybe we can think about that in the future when we go over there.
Back to solar development?
Yeah.
Couple of things, one, typically, you're looking at about a ten-acre site in order to get enough site to get the one or two megawatts that you might be looking for. One of, two big concerns there, one is that, again, you don't own, you only own about half that property. So, I can't remember the exact. So, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's certainly less than ten acres that you own.
On Allen Street?
On Allen Street, yes. That site was leased from a private landowner, portion of it and portion of it was owned by the town. And I understand that that's still where it stands today. The second piece is, again, letting sleepy dogs lie. You know, if you, if you touch it, if you cut down all the trees, I can be fairly certain you're going to have to do something with what's there that will have a cost to it. And is that cost...
Worth the expense?
Worth the expense. As you've seen the solar market go over the last year or two, there was a push towards landfills. I worked a little bit on the landfill project up in East Hampton where they built actually the first solar facility on a municipal landfill. Utilities got away from those fairly quickly because of the development cost and went to open land. That was vacant, had a very low development cost to it. So as you start pushing up the development costs, the, the economies start to drop pretty quickly on what you might make for revenue off of the development.
Okay. Okay, so you, it looks like as of June first, you'll have the report ready.
Yeah, there'll be a draft going into the state for their review. I will try to give Nick and if there's, you know, the board wants to get a, as much as we can. This is all happening fairly quickly.
We'd rather, we'd like to have a copy. Well, I have no idea. Would you like a copy?
Yeah.
Would you like a copy? So, yeah, if we can get a copy of that draft that's going to the state. So that way, we can all be on the same page when it does come in and you don't have to do so much remedial stuff for those.
I don't expect a lot of surprises. I expect it to be flatten the property, cover the property, probably go to the outsides first and work your way back in.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, one of the benefits of this ultimately is that as you go to the limits of the property and come back in, it'll be a benefit to the DPW is that we should be able to develop some more open space for laydown of materials and things like that. And once we remove this massive earthen pile that we have out there and spread it around, that will open up quite a bit of property as well, which we do need for, for storage and laydown and things like that.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It was informative.
Thank you for your patience. And where can we get a map like that? You have the map? So can we all get copies? Okay, cool.
Yeah, the ones I have are, I think I provided half scales.
Thank you.
Great to see you again.
Okay. The next issue on, the next topic is the health agent?
Yeah. We had a meeting with the members of the Oversight Committee for the Hampton County Shared Public Health Nurse. We all brought evaluations and, to modify the request for the proposal for the RFP.
Okay.
Which is request for a proposal.
Okay, we're going down to twenty-five. Okay, we'll do twenty-five first. So the update on the public health nurse oversight, I was asking about the, I was doing number twenty-four first, but go ahead. Finish what you've already started. That's fine.
And we all brought evaluations in and made them out because the only, the only one that gave a proposal was a ready EDI, they call them.
Okay.
And we submitted a proposal to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And they're for consultant service as a principal investigator for community health assessment for nine Hampton Counties municipalities.
Okay.
And they're funded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Administration. They offered, you know, data and independent affiliate analysts sharing a comprehensive and thorough community health assessment. So we met with them and hashed it back and forth and gave them our evaluation.
Okay.
And that's about all of it until the next meeting. Nick was there, so he might be able to add a little more.
Do you want to add anything more, Nick?
I think that was covered, I think that covered the meeting.
Okay.
What was the other part of that you wanted me to do?
The, the health agent.
Well...
Just an update for the public.
Yeah, the health agent, we don't have one right now.
Okay, he's coming, he's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He retired. His name was Admiral, well, he only had two weeks ago, but he notified us.
Okay.
That's what he was going to do.
No.
And, and he stayed with us for the two weeks and we're in the process of getting another one.
Okay. Did, for emergencies, did Mrs.?
So, if I could, then just report, yeah, to the board, there, Lori McCool was one of the, is an individual who works currently for three communities as a health agent. And she was someone who had expressed interest in the temporary position with this current round, if you will. And at the time, had thought that she would have more time to devote towards those duties. She has indicated and has come in and I believe will conduct her first work sometime this week, maybe Thursday.
Okay.
But she is available really on a spot basis.
Right, an emergency, yeah.
And, well, she...
A little coverage.
Emergency and if, if regular things come up, but I think it's more of if you could sort of bunch maybe a couple of, and not to downplay one complaint over another, but a nuisance complaint of maybe tall grass or something like that versus an immediate issue with a tenant or something like that, a prioritization.
Okay.
So she's available in, in general for the, for the work that needs to be done, but it is on a spot basis. My question really for the board is what does the board want to do to try and fill this position on a more permanent?
Permanent basis.
Yeah.
Do we have, I mean, I wasn't here when this happened, but do we have another person that's interested that we can...
No, at this point, that would exhaust the list of people who had applied. So I guess the option that we would have is, through the chair, is to go out again and advertise through the... Where do we go through, Mr. The Health Department?
But there was, in this last round, Mr. Knickie from the state was good enough to send something around via his list of state contacts. This would be the third time that he would be used as a resource in this regard. I don't know that that would make a difference to him. I believe there was also, maybe, no, not this round, in the previous round last year, there were advertisements that were placed and so forth.
I, and so I was, if, through the chair, I would think that we would want to advertise this time to get a bigger pool.
Yeah.
Because the last pool, we only had the four, four candidates.
And they all went to the wayside.
Well, yeah, we, it is what it is. So if you wanted to entertain a motion, that we would advertise...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to advertise for a health agent as soon as possible.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
The only discussion, for the chair, actually. Do you think we can use, because I know we got the thing with the pizza shop that we got to get looked at and a few other things. Do you think we can use this Mrs. McCool?
Yeah, absolutely.
In a temporary basis, just to do a couple of things?
Absolutely.
Well, through the chair.
You're the chair.
But we got a lot on our plate for the health agent right now.
We do.
It was kind of bad timing.
And I do, I, I agree with you. I do think there is an urgency to go ahead and make sure. But it, it could be worse if Mrs. McCool wasn't willing to, to step in. And, and I will take credit for begging her.
And I'll give you the credit.
And we'll give you credit.
I did, I did call her and she didn't want to take it.
Yeah, and then I called her.
Angela called and I don't know what she said to her, but...
I just spoke to her.
I guess it's a woman thing.
That's, I was going to say that.
Listen, don't get sexist here.
I was just saying, I'll let you get in trouble.
So...
Can you, can you make, can you make arrangements?
Okay, well, the motion's been moved and seconded, so now you call for a vote.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carried.
Carried.
Okay. So...
Chairman?
Yes?
Pardon me. Mr. Chairman, I would ask the board, and I'm certainly not looking to prolonger the discussion on this point, but I would ask the board for a direction as to what the compensation for the position will be, what the board's expectation for hours will be. Currently, the way the board has it structured is, and this isn't necessarily applying to, well, Ms. McCool, but it is an hourly rate, so to speak, of fifteen dollars an hour based on ten hours a week. However, if there were, ideally, I think in this last round, what the idea was to see if stipend of a one hundred and fifty dollars, not including, without mileage, just one hundred and fifty dollars for ten hours' worth of work a week, whether it was eight hours one week or twelve hours the next. But the expectation was ten hours' worth of work, worth of work a week. And I would leave it to the board's opinion as to whether or not you think that there are ten hours' worth of work per week out there. And for what it's worth, I would offer that I believe that there's far more than that on a lot of weeks. Maybe not every week, but a lot of weeks. So my question to the board is, do you want to continue to go with what the current compensation system is? Or do you want to consider something else?
Through the chair.
What was it before we hired these people? It was more than that, wasn't it?
That's what it's always been.
It has been.
It has been.
Mr. Chairman, if, if, Madam Selectman, if I could, if we're talking about with Amy Petrowski, that has been, that was the compensation. If we're talking about prior to Amy Petrowski, the compensation was higher.
And that was because the individual, through the chair. That was because the individual had been here for quite some time.
Right, yeah, right.
And it has, I would ask that it be given a chance because Amy Petrowski did do it very well and she was very effective with it. And I would think that we would be able to keep that the same, at least to try it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment to the, to the Board of Health. And I would make the comment with the utmost respect and, of course, will follow up the board, carry out the board's orders. In my opinion, this position as health agent for the town merits more hours, more compensation. And I think that the reason, one of the reasons that we were able to hold on to a candidate or a health agent with the qualifications of Mr. Coaw for such a long period of time was that the town was willing and able to recognize that the importance of that position and the value of that position through offering appropriate compensation, which I, again, in my opinion, in my experience, the current level is inadequate.
I would, through the chair, I would say that the hours, the number of hours was set.
Ten?
It was set at ten. That did not, that's what the board had agreed on. And the compensation was the fifteen dollars per hour. I will say that Amy was a very busy young woman. But there are some times when there is less work that is done. And so she would still get the compensation of the one fifty every week, even when there was less. And sometimes it was busier. But she definitely always, you know, put her on her ten, but there were times when there was nothing to do. I would think that you would try, try it and, and see what happens.
Do you want to make a motion to try it? And then if we don't get enough applicants, we got to do something different?
I'll make, I'll make that motion. So move.
I'll second.
Call for your vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So that'll, so you have to reiterate to...
Yeah, Nick will do that as soon as possible, put an add in. All right.
Yep.
Okay. Your new business?
Could I say one more thing?
Sure, you can say as much as you want. You're the chair.
What would that go on, Nick, for the, I mean, to try to draw people in?
Well, the, this last time, it solely went as, really as a list and it was on the town website. We always do that. The time before, with Ms. Petrowski getting hired, we did a Sunday ad, I believe, as well as a, an ad and a reminder, which cost somewhere in the neighborhood of around, I want to say five or six hundred dollars between the two. But that garnered maybe, I think it was maybe eight applicants, something like that at that point.
Do we have the names of any other applicants that, that, you know, applied before that we could go, go to?
It's a good idea.
Hmm, that is a good idea.
Instead of reinventing the wheel, get people, as you call it.
Exactly.
Will that violate any, I'm sorry, through the chair, will that violate any rules as far as hiring? No? So if we had, if we had a list of people who actually applied?
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Send out a, send out a personal invitation. Okay. I think that's a great idea.
So then, what would be the directive?
To, to send out, he's asking what would be the directive, so you're asking...
Well, the directive would be to send out to the other people that applied the last time and see if they're at all interested in the position.
In addition to?
In what?
In addition to the advertising. Or did you want them to advertise?
Yeah, in addition to the advertising, but we probably should give these people first choice if they're still interested, huh?
So then, would it be the board?
I think you should do it all at one, excuse me, through the chair. If, in the interest of time, it would be just to do it all at one, one time.
Yeah, because...
Because you, from what you had said, you expressed an urgency, so...
Yeah, times are the essence.
Okay, so I would think we would do it all at one time. Okay?
Well, yeah.
You good? Okay, and maybe we'll do it on Craigslist too. Ah, the silence.
So my son was always looking on Craigslist to find a job.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. My son got a job on Craigslist. I thought it was not true, but he really did get one. So perhaps we should try Craigslist as well. The next one is number twenty-six, sir. The hearing request for...
Yes.
Violations at one sixty-six Vineland Avenue?
Well, I went out to Vineland Avenue with the building inspector.
Okay.
And we looked at everything he was doing. They had five people out there, including his lawyer. We explained to the guy what he has to do to meet the standards. And he agreed to do them. And we're going to go out there and re-inspect it within a reasonable time.
Okay.
And give him time to do what he is working on it.
Okay.
But, you know, he's got a project there with the wetness.
Okay.
But he agreed to do everything we said.
Okay, so...
And he corrected a few things, you know?
But he requested for a hearing, so...
He requested a hearing?
Well, that's what it says here. Any... Elaine? Or Nick? It says here, a request for a hearing. Is that accurate?
That is, that is accurate. He made a request. He was sent a list of violations and so he submitted a request for a hearing as indicated on the list of violations. It's his right to do so.
Okay.
Within seven days. So he, it appears that he met that.
Okay.
And he has dated, I'm sorry.
No, 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 please.
He has dates of correction of May twenty-fourth on, it looks like all of them.
Okay, so his request for a hearing was on what basis? I'm just helping you out here, Chair.
He, he is, he went line by line on what the complaints were and responded to them in his letter.
Do we have copy of that?
I have this, this is this one, yeah.
Yeah.
This one right here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Now, his letter came out, this letter came out on May fourth. You went to see him. What, what date was that?
I don't know. I got it written down somewhere.
Was it after May fourth?
Uh, yes.
Well, because he has requested for a hearing, I guess we issue a hearing date. But maybe with the possibility of canceling it, if you resolved it already?
Well, it looks like he said he had a gutter repaired. There's no, we can fill a second floor. We told him he might have fixed the roof. I mean, maybe he wants a hearing that he has some of these things fixed, you know?
Okay, well, so, so...
That's the only thing I can...
The next date that we have available would be?
Well, the next Board of Selectment meeting, regular scheduled meeting of the board, is the twenty-seventh of May. I would say to the board that you have already, it appears that that meeting may... I would say to the board, um, that you have, already appears that that meeting may be shaping up as quite a long one as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just letting the board know that.
Yeah. Um, perhaps we could start earlier? Would, just to do the hearing? Maybe we do the hearing in the afternoon, maybe?
Or maybe five-thirty or something.
Yeah, five-thirty. Would you be able to come in earlier on the twenty-seventh? Okay, so on the twenty-seventh, we'll have that hearing at five-thirty. Um, is that okay with you, Mister, uh, Sir Chair?
Yep.
Okay. So is that, you got that?
Let's search here.
Search here, yeah, okay, gotcha, alright.
Knights of the Round Table.
Yeah.
Well, that was five-thirty on what day?
At five-thirty on the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
So our meeting will start at five-thirty, and that'll start with the hearing.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Madam Selectman. So, a couple of points on this matter. Um, assuming that we can have the health agent go out and inspect prior to the twenty-fourth.
Prior to that?
Which is the, well, two, right, two things. Um, if we have, uh, noticed back that all of these violations have been corrected, I'm assuming then, um, Mister Joe would be, uh, satisfied that he doesn't need a hearing, but we would ask him for that.
Right.
Um, and then also, at the same time, um, th- there's gonna be a gap from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh.
Well, if.
For notice to correction. If he, if we go out there and find that it hasn't been on the twenty-seventh, then there, about the twenty-fourth, there could be some pending.
Yeah, I gotta ask you a question. Didn't Adam go out there before he left?
I don't know the status of the inspections.
How, do you know that, Lorraine?
I believe he should go out with Adam, too.
Yeah.
I think it was on a Friday.
Yeah.
Last Saturday.
Okay, so.
That's a look at his report, you know?
Okay, so the question, though, I, I, I heard what you said. So the question is, if, uh, we go out and inspect after the twenty-fourth, and there's a problem, would it be okay not to charge him? That, 'cause it's, 'cause he's gonna be fined. So from the time of the twenty-seventh up until the time that we have a health agent go in and inspect it, very close to that date, would we, would it, would we agree not to fine during that, that short period? That's what the question is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you, especially if he looks at, I'm sorry, through the chair, especially if it looks like he's making progress. You know, if he's not doing anything, obviously, but if he's got eighty or ninety percent of it done, then, you know, why fine him if he's making an effort to try to get a payment done?
Say, Paul, when we were out there, the guy was filthy from head to toe in a seven-foot trench.
Yeah.
Digging around the house. We told him he had to get DigSafe out there, though, before he, 'cause he's gonna put a perimeter all around the house. Water problem, so, I mean, the guy is out there working.
He's trying, yeah.
So, so we'll have the, the hearing, if necessary, Nick, on the twenty-seventh at five-thirty. If he has all of his violations corrected, we, we'll, we'll ask him if he still has a need for the twenty-seventh. He would have to withdraw that. Um, and if there is, um, a, a, a lag time between the twenty-fourth and the twenty-seventh of it being re-inspected, he will not be, incur any charges, any penalties at that time. Alright. Am I still going for you, Chair? Am I still carrying on for now?
Yes.
As your chair, okay. Alright, uh, there's a request for a summer concert, two thousand four Temporary Food Service Permit for the summer concert from June twenty-fifth through August thirteenth. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, there's, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the Rotary Summer Concert two thousand fourteen for approval of rain date concerts and food services, um, through August twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Food, uh, food service application approval by the food inspector.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? Insurance is pending.
Yeah, just that they get the best-looking hot dog and ice cream salesman, that's all I can say.
Oh, is that? That must be you.
You got it.
Okay.
That's providing we got a health inspector, right?
Well, they, our health inspector already did it.
Okay.
They did it ahead of time, yeah. Food service. And so the insurance is pending, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With the best-looking hot dog under. Okay.
So I have, I wear glasses.
Um, okay, so that, we're done with that. Alright. I guess I'll go ahead with the correspondence. Uh, we received a correspondence, uh, notice of a plant col- the closing of, uh, Carlin Combustion Technology Incorporated. What days are they closing, Nick?
Wow, the, uh, letter indicates that it will be, uh, taking place on or about July first.
Okay.
That means we can park in the parking lot.
Oh, hey, that's a building that's coming available.
For the parade, too.
Big enough for us?
Yeah.
Just checking.
My mother used to work there.
Okay. I'm sorry to see them go. They've been here for a while, and, you know, you hate to see any jobs being lost, um.
They were the former, already feeling.
I think they have environmental problems there, don't they?
Yeah, probably. From the old days when they were feeling, yeah.
I don't know, they were just sending us that, that, um, that information, so. Alright, um, I guess we'll go to, uh, Town Council.
Don't forget you have some new business on the other page that we hadn't gotten.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, Town Council, he's, he's sitting there, he's probably melted to his seat about now. Hi.
Hi, Mr.
Welcome back.
Yes, sir.
It's been so long. Okay, the, uh, is there anything on here that needs to go into executive session?
Item thirty of the poll, just from my, uh.
Okay.
Respect to litigation matters.
Okay, anything else?
Um, not based on what I have in my packet with respect to any of these. I'm, I'm not sure what item twenty-nine anonymous complaints, uh, deals with.
Okay.
And I, I think the Recreation Department, number thirty-two, is, is just an update as to where they stand in looking for
Okay.
employees, which wouldn't be an executive situation.
Okay. Um, the anonymous complaints, um, I, I don't know, I know I received one. Did you receive an anonymous complaint with regards to the pizza shop?
Yeah.
Did you receive an anonymous? So we all received that letter, so that was a, that was put on, I guess.
Um, Madam Chair, this was really put on for a discussion with the board with, uh, respect to the board's, um, policy on handling of an, of anonymous complaints.
Okay.
Um, taking into account that the board spoke with the Building Commissioner earlier in this meeting
Mm-hmm.
about that matter, but I don't know that that, the vehicle for that was really an anonymous complaint, so to speak. Maybe, maybe it was, maybe I missed that.
Alright, that's.
But there was that complaint, and then, uh, maybe one other that was part of this packet or that the board had received. The general question is, how does the board, uh, want to have anonymous complaints handled? The current, general, generally speaking, uh, the current practice is to ignore an anonymous complaint.
Ignore?
Well, unless it indicates that there might be something of public safety, uh, in there. Those things are always given consideration very carefully, but to receive just an anonymous complaint, um, what action could be taken on it, I think has been the board's, uh, general philosophy in the past.
Um, I can, I feel you. Can we, we're gonna hear what he has to say, and then I can go to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Turn it down to you.
It's really the board's choice as to, as to what to do with anonymous complaints. Um, I would follow the suggestion, or at least the policy that, um, Town Administrator suggests, and that is where we have a complaint from an individual, a group of individuals who fail to identify themselves.
Mm-hmm.
There's no way that you're going to be able to respond to those individuals. So that if the complaint is one that appears to be something of substance, that there's a health or safety situation that exists, then I think it would be appropriate to direct the appropriate department or responsible entity to investigate it. But if it's a complaint that is not dealing with public health and safety, then perhaps you, the board needs to look at it on a case-by-case basis, whether they, they feel it warrants any further action. But not to have the office go out and try to investigate something where it's not a safety issue, it's not a health issue. It's maybe, uh, upset about the way someone may have feel they were spoken to in a telephone conversation, or treated when they, um, ran into someone in a, you know, in a public facility or public building. I mean, i- i- it's, I don't know that you wanna necessarily adopt a policy where every complaint that comes in from an unnamed source on every subject, you're gonna take and go and investigate. You could get, you could get, you don't, but you could get ten, ten a day. Um, and so the serious ones, yes, I think they should be investigated, because if there is a situation, it should be addressed. But if it's more a complaint just in, I don't like what's going on, I don't like the way this is being done, I don't like, I think this is a bad situation, or I think this is something that should be addressed. And you don't have anyone to contact to get more information about it, then from what you receive from the complainant, the board could decide whether or not they think further action would be warranted.
Uh, through the chair, well, like on the last situation that, that the building inspector talked about.
Mm-hmm.
It's, I didn't know who to call, because I got the letter like all of them did, so what I did was go down, I don't know what the letter was telling us, they had no permits, had no, I looked into all that. They got the proper permits, you know? The guy gave them a little bit of a hard time, but they ended up getting the proper permits and, but I have nobody to call back to tell them, hey, I, I looked into it, you know, they got the proper per- permits.
Yeah.
You know, if you wanna come to the town hall, I'll show you the permits they got, but, you know.
There's nobody.
So you think that's.
I always tried to call someone back when they called me, but.
See, and that's the frustration with the anonymous situation where it's not a health or safety issue. It's, wh- what are you gonna do? You're gonna do the investigation, you find out that there isn't a problem, so there's nothing for you to do, but there's also nobody to report your findings to. It's sort of, almost a spinning of your own wheels to, of time that could be used perhaps on a more, um, immediate situation rather than and I'm not saying not to, I'm not saying to ignore them, but I'm saying you can tell sometimes from the complaint itself, whether, where it's not health and safety, whether it really appears to, to need some further investigation without someone coming forward and saying, here's my problem with the situation.
Well, through the board, but they, um, they also had a safety issue about people going out the back door. That's why I looked into it.
Well, and also the food of the, the, whether there was a certificate of occupancy, occupying a building for public use without a certificate of occupancy is a safety issue.
But they, but they said the police weren't doing their job, and there's things going on. Well, I found out that eleven out of fourteen arrests for DDWI were from down there, so they are out there doing their job.
Okay.
But, like I say, the only, the only way we can get to the person if he's watching TV on this channel tonight.
Right.
Other than that, we have no way to get a hold of, uh, let him know what we did.
If, if I may, through the chair, obviously, Selectman Gorman, you know, saw that, the letter we all got and, and did something about it, but we had this other, I don't know if you folks got it, but there's other, this other little letter there about the trash cans?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that something that we can, just through the Health Department, just send a letter and say, there's been reports that your trash cans are in the street? We'd appreciate it if you removed them. I mean, is that something, and once again, 'cause it's anonymous, it's the neighbors. I don't know how big, I don't know how big the street is, but how many neighbors are on the street?
Uh, I, I, I guess the, the question that I have is whether or not there's a requirement with respect to the placing of receptacles for disposal of trash on the tree, about whether there's a timeframe. Some communities have that.
But these are in the, tend to be in the street when they're at times and been hit by cars.
Yeah, 'cause he doesn't pick it up.
Right.
I mean, so there would be a violation if there was a requirement in place that you put them out no more than, uh, put them out by six o'clock PM the day before collection, and remove them by six PM the day of collection or something. Then you have a violation, but it, if it's a, if it's a circumstance. See, the problem with the anonymous complaints, unless you go investigate them, you're not gonna know whether it's a legit, you know?
Yeah, true.
It's actually happening or not. So, that's why I say on a case-by-case basis, it may make, you could, you could, in this situation, if you wanted to address it, you could send a letter to the, to the property owner, if he's even identified in here. Um, to, to the, to the address and say, we've received a complaint from, uh, purportedly from people in the neighborhood that you're failing to, um, properly maintain your trash. So we're gonna ask you to, you know, please remove them, uh, put them in your garage shortly after to, to avoid a dan- potentially dangerous situation.
Yeah, but through the chair.
Yeah.
You know, myself, my trash bin's been out in the road. When I'm working all day, I put them out in the morning. And if it's a windy day or, or whatever, the guy puts them too close to the road, when, when he empties them, a, a truck goes by and, and, uh, you know, the, uh.
The back drive.
Yeah, the wind takes it from the, you know, and, uh, you know, what are you gonna do? The only thing I ask, I ask my neighbor, if I'm not home, could you take mine in? So it don't get blown out there, but, I mean, it's kind of a touchy path.
I guess that, again, that's the, the issue. I mean, there, there's a, there's a reason for some of the things that people complain about.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why I say on the non-health and safety complaints, case by case, you look at it and say, yeah, maybe we should go do something here, or presumably not much we can do. You sort of make that determination when it comes in, rather than sort of having a carte blanche. I would not like to see the board take a position where you would ignore complaints of non-public safety or public health issues, simply because, to ignore them just because they weren't one of those two things. Because there may be a situation that isn't either of the others, that should be addressed, and so
So we'll.
Look at it as a command.
So we'll evaluate it on a, a case-by-case basis.
But, um, I think you should make it known that we'd be, probably get more quicker attention and response if the individuals identified who they were.
Identify themselves. Um, but certainly, they can ask for their names to be withheld, you know? Um, I think we can, um, honor that if somebody were to ask to have their name withheld.
I'm not sure under the Public Director's request, if I had the actual document, that you could do that.
Oh, okay.
You could not release it if the name, somebody called and said, who did it? But if they asked for a copy of the actual document and it was.
They have to see, okay. Then that's probably why we're getting anonymous, um, complaints. Okay, so, um, the next one, water and sewers and direct cost allocation policy?
I'm gonna defer it to the Administrator.
This is, uh, just as a carryover item, in case the board wanted to have a little kind of discussion, um, based on last time. But then again, the changes that council's recommended, uh, the board doesn't have for this, uh, for this meeting. So I, I, it's a carryover item.
Okay, so there's been changes, so we'll get a copy of those changes that council?
Didn't council review that policy?
The, the one, that's the one, the policy that came down from the Director of Public Works?
Yes.
I made, I did make suggestions and comments to bring it in line with what the statutory requirements will be if and when the enterprise funds are adopted by town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, through the board.
Yes.
Can you explain to me what that is?
Wanna go through those changes? Do you have those with you?
Indirect.
I, I don't have the, the changes, um, with me. I don't have that letter, because I wasn't sure that that's what it was. But the board received, um, a month or so ago, um, a, a letter of understanding
Mm-hmm.
prepared by the Director of Public Works outlining the procedures that were gonna be followed by, jointly by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works in utilizing the water and sewer funds once Town Meeting had adopted the enterprise funds. And one of, and one of the conditions that I do remember that we talked, that was there, was that there was a provision that the boards had agreed that in Octo- November, November or December of this year, once those funds were established, that the current balances of the water and sewer funds would be transferred into the enterprise funds. And my comment to the Administrator was, even though the funds are approved or the enterprise funds are approved and authorized by Town Meeting at this town meeting, they can't be established under the statute until the Board of Public Works, who's responsible for those funds, prepares and submits a budget.
In two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen Town Meeting for approval for those funds. And at that point, when that's approved, that, that motion approving that would include the transfer of the then balance of those funds into the, um, funds when they, when they were created in July one, two thousand fifteen. The other issue was the use of some of those funds to offset some of the costs of employee personnel, such as insurances and other things, which, um, I believe the agreement that's in place or we're thinking about is just appropriating the money from those funds to defer those costs currently as if the enterprise fund wasn't existed, and then next year it'll all fall into the enterprise.
Yeah, I, I, through the board, I, I understand, but I, I guess I didn't know what they were talking about, 'cause they call it something else, too, don't they?
Enterprise fund, yeah, the enterprise, yeah.
Now they call them the Water and Sewer Fund.
Um, but what account, or what's, what's the account they call it, that they're putting it into the, uh?
Enterprise. Isn't that an enterprise fund?
The enterprise funds are the accounts that are being created. Those are the ones that are, that are on the warrant to be created this Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Effective July. Effective July 1, 2000, July 1, 2015. And the indirect costs was something that the appropriations committee wanted to have the water and sewer enterprise fund pick up, because it's part of the operation of those departments. And because the funds can't be created until July 1 of next year.
Yeah.
My suggestion to the accountant was to treat it as just an appropriation from the existing water and sewer fund to offset that portion, approximately a hundred thousand dollars, to get it into the budget, so that it can be used to offset it, but not treat it as coming from the enterprise funds, which we can't establish yet. I think that process is in the works.
Okay.
But the accountant would have to confirm that.
We're not really doing anything with it just yet.
Could I ask you one more question?
Sure, you're the boss.
Are we having the assessors? I mean, the audit, people come to explain this at a town meeting?
Yes.
The auditors are gonna be there?
What's gonna happen, with Selectman Gorman is, I guess I'm presenting the two warrant items. The DPW will then get up and explain, because they're support, obviously supporting it. And then someone from Scanlon and Associates will be there to answer any questions anybody may have in the audience, so, yeah.
Because that's kind of a difficult one to explain.
Well, they're the ones who've been pushing it for six years, so let them explain.
Maybe they should explain it first. Okay, all right, so, now new business, public record request?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is, I have some material, but it dates back to like February or something.
What, what this is, is a request for the release of a portion of the executive session minutes from January 21st from an individual-
What year?
Of thi, of this year.
Of 2014.
2014. Relative to a letter submitted about the fire department and a session that the board went into executive with the fire chief. And what you have in your packet is the, are the minutes from that particular session. The action requested here of the board is to see if the board will release those, that section of the executive session minutes and then therefore subsequently release them to the individual who's making the request. And the standard would be if the board believed that the reason for the purpose of the discussion in executive session no longer exists.
This is also part of, sort of a broader scope here, because as the board is aware, you have the right to go into executive session for a number of different reasons. But, the statute also requires that when the purpose of the executive session is completed, if there is no other reason that the documents would be required to be kept in executive session minutes, then the board is to review those periodically and vote to move items out of the executive minutes into the open minutes. So this is a request for this to be done with respect to these particular minutes at a period of time outside of the board's normal review of your executive session minutes.
Through the board.
Yeah.
How long does that take, Mr.?
I'm sorry, how long it take one?
To move those minutes out? I mean, is there a time limit? We have to keep them in there?
No.
No time?
No, there's a, there's a, but periodically, you're supposed to, you're supposed to have your minutes reviewed and then vote to whether or not you believe the purpose of the executive session is completed. So, for example, let's say a year ago, there was a discussion by the board to purchase a certain piece of property in town, and it was an executive session so that the price wouldn't be affected. And then it was determined either to purchase it, and it became public, or the town voted not to purchase it. The purpose of that discussion about how much to pay or what we should offer, how we should do that, once it's determined you're not going forward, or you, or you acquire the land, clearly the purpose of that executive session is at an end, and those minutes would then be voted by the board to be moved into open session. But, let's say a matter of discipline of an employee is being considered. The materials that are presented and the discussion about the employee and anything related to that discipline never leaves executive. The employee has a right to privacy with respect to his personnel file, and those materials would stay there and never be transferred into the open minute section. So it's, it's the type of
Yeah.
reason you go into executive session, and the status of the situation as to whether it's been completed or whether there still is something going on with that particular situation.
Okay.
So I would think that probably the response, two responses you could have, one, to say you'd like to review the minutes to determine whether you think that they, that these minutes are such that their executive purpose has come to an end, and you would move at your next session perhaps to release them, or review it and think that it's, they're minutes that either haven't come to an end, or will never come to an end because they're employee-related, or some other type of issue that would keep them from the, and make that decision, but I think the board needs to look at that and perhaps take it up at their next meeting.
Any conversations, Selectman Gorman?
Nope.
Okay, Selectman Federici?
Nope.
Is there any objection to having the minutes released at this point? Well, excuse me, before I go there, Nick, have we, where are we with releasing our minutes? How far?
The board has, has not released executive session minutes in some time.
In some time?
Yeah.
So we're probably overdue? Yeah, okay. I put words in your mouth, forgive me.
Worth looking at.
Okay.
Certainly.
All right. Are there any concerns about releasing these minutes? Selectman Federici?
Just one point, is that you are releasing a, in this case, if the board takes the vote, you would be releasing a particular topic within the executive session. There were, there may have been other topics in that, that would reflect, that would be called the minutes of the executive session. This is the topic that's being requested, so it's not the full of the executive session minutes, just that topic.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification, appreciate that. Okay, so-
I would suggest to you that perhaps
Yes.
there should be some discussion with council with respect to what is, in fact, I haven't read these entire minutes, but there are some discussions about named individuals and, and so whether or not these minutes really should be executive because they deal with personnel issue matters as much as they deal with just open session issues.
Okay.
So perhaps if I could suggest that add this item, this discussion of this item to your executive session, and we could, you could determine at your next meeting how you're gonna handle these minutes.
Okay, so this is going to executive session then? Number 32 is now on executive session, you have that, Nick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next one is the recreation department. The update, as you know, we did not do, thank God, we didn't do interviews today for the recreation assistant. We kind of had to regroup a little bit, and so they're being scheduled for this week. Rather, rather than to do it a little hastily, we're gonna slow it down and, and do it right. So they should be ready for interviews on the 27th, and I think that's what Nick was alluding to, are the meeting on the 27th starting to be a little heavy. So, I just wanted to give you that update. In the meanwhile, unfortunately, one of our employees did have a health issue. So, that department is not only down the full-time person, who will be, you know, who has left already, but also a 19-hour person. So, what the, the recommendation would be to, what would be for the 19-hour, the current 19-hour person to go to 40 hours just to fill in for the moment. Did you speak with council, the unions?
I did.
Okay.
And they gave consent.
They did give consent, and we're just checking to see if this is okay with you, council. For the 19-hour position to step up and be 40 hours, until, at least until we can fill the 40-hour position through the interviews on the 27th, and then look to have a, a temporary person do the 19-hour position.
Is that a motion?
Um-
Are you waiting for-
I'm waiting for council to say yay, yay, nay, nay. I can't believe I said that.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Sleep deprivation.
I know.
Through the chair.
Don't look.
Through the chair, the question for council, if I could-
Yes, please.
There's a situation where the union is giving consent that if there's a 19-hour employee that could fill in a full-time position by adding 19, making it a 37 and a half hour full-time position on a temporary basis. Does council see any labor issues with that, given that we have union consent?
The union is allowing, is saying that they will allow a part time to fill in to do a 37 and a half hour. As long as, as long as they, they put that in writing and indicate that it's not necessarily, I'm sure they would want to have that it's not necessarily presidential in nature. Yeah, I don't see any, any problem with that, as long as the union's in agreement with it.
Okay, so we'll have that happen as soon as possible. Okay, so then we'll be going, so that is a motion to have the 19-hour person go to 40?
Yeah.
Is that immediate, immediately?
Immediately, that will happen right now, as soon as we vote on it.
You have the letter?
Do you have the letter from the union?
I have an email communication in writing. From the union president.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to have the 19-hour person step up to be the full-time person and to look for a temporary agent to fill that 19-hour position that's left vacant.
So move.
Second, okay, any discussion, any further discussion? Do we need to have the names in that motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that was the easiest one for the evening, thank you, fellas. Okay.
Actually, the only discussion I had was, what did you say this morning during the open meeting, law meeting about conversing with people, and you said if so, if something happened to someone and you wanted to tell them about, you know, tell us about, and it's exactly the thing that happened to this person?
Yeah.
That was eerie when I got this email. I was like, wow, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's like, and, and I wanted to tell you, and it was like,
Yeah.
I guess I can't tell you. Okay, all right, moving. Okay, wow, okay.
A lot of stuff is easy.
Okay, all right.
Actually, I could, if you, if I could interrupt for a second.
Sure.
On item 32, which is the public records request.
Yes.
It appears that the request is from the individual employee who was discussed in the letter. To that extent, if the board determines that the purpose of the executive session is no longer necessary, or you could even, without even doing that, you could forward the letter to him since it deals with him and it's a request.
Okay.
To deal with it, so, I would not have a problem if you voted to remove it from executive session and forward it to the individual.
So I'll entertain a motion to release the minutes of January, not the minutes, the topic. Oh, boy.
Session, session one, topic one of the executive session minutes of the board of selectmen, January 21st, 2014.
What he said.
Um, so moved.
Okay, second, can I have a second? Okay, any com, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's one less thing that we have to talk about, okay. All right.
Item 33.
Item 33, we just did that one.
Item 32.
That was item 32.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, now, can I ask? I'm, I'm going back to the Selectman old business. The accounting position, can we perhaps meet on, what's today, Tuesday, perhaps meet on Friday and just do that?
We've got a Monday, a Monday, we've got a Monday meeting, a meeting Monday.
I know, is that gonna be, will we have enough time to do that?
No.
No.
What's our, what's our agenda look like for next Monday, do you know?
Right now, the only thing that it would be is if the board had any final questions about the warrant articles.
Okay, you think we can put it there?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll defer this number 13 till Monday.
Okay.
Do we, do I need a vote on that? To defer it until Monday?
Did you just table it?
Just do it. Okay. Okay, new business, there's a request for Dr.
Siva, Siva Kumar?
Siva, Siva Kumar, for a rite of silence on Wednesday, May 21st at 7:00 PM on the rail trail. Recommendations are there from DPW Police and Fire. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So move. A second.
Second, any, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's also a request for the same individual for the Parkinson disease fundraiser on the trail ma, trail, rail trail, Sunday, May 25th, 2014, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Approval by DPW and recommendations from the police and fire are on, in your packet.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Memorial Day, recommendations from the ITAM, ITAMS?
ITAMS, yeah.
ITAMS and the American Legion to appoint the Memorial Day Committee for 2014. Okay, so I'll entertain a remote, a motion to accept their recommendations.
So moved. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I should wait for a second.
So, take a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, and all in fa, any discussion?
Discussion, we're gonna all be here that day, right, because they've got, they've got tasks for each of us, I just want to make sure all three of us are gonna be here.
You're gonna be here on Memorial Day?
Yeah, yep.
You know you're done, you can't take any more vacations.
Yeah.
Lend them no more vacations, until next year. And I'm just kidding. Okay, so, the motion has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On, also they have a Memorial Day ceremony program.
That's just for your-
That's just for us to see? Okay, then we don't need to move that. Okay, the J.C.'s Annual Summer Carnival and Fireworks. I'll entertain a motion to approve the summer carnival, June 28th through Wednesday, July 2nd, 2014, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Thursday, July 3rd, 2014, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 PM.
So move.
A second?
Yep.
Um, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, there's a, I'll entertain a motion for fireworks on Wednesday, July 2nd at 10:00 PM.
Go ahead.
Second.
So move.
Is moved and seconded? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I love the fireworks. Okay, I-
They're a day early.
I know, I noticed.
That's what I got confused about, I was looking at the date going, it's not the third.
Yeah, but, is that a typo? Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion, they have, um, I'll entertain a motion for a liquor license from June 28th to July 2nd, 2014, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and July 3rd, 2014, from 6:00 PM to midnight, for the J.C.'s also.
So moved, second.
All, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Also, there's an entertainment license, including Sunday. Recommendations received by the DPW Fire Police and Recreation are on file, and the insurance is pending. So, we can ex, we'll ex, I'll entertain a motion on, with the condition of that the insurance will be in place by the time that the fair's gonna happen.
So move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick, can you make sure that that insurance, follow up on that insurance? Okay, number 19, is the Elcat intern? Yeah, please, Mr. Mackey.
Because we want to see the fancy new shades.
Do you have shades?
I finally need a glass?
Oh, well, no, welcome to the group.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Um, well, in the interest of time.
Yes.
I just, uh, my, we have a spring semester intern that the board approved, um, Nick Balboni.
Mm-hmm.
He's leaving for Boston for a position.
How did you let that happen?
So he's leaving Friday. It's his last day.
Okay.
So I'm here to recommend, um, for cons- the board's consideration, and I'll distribute these tonight.
Okay.
Um, just so you have them, and I'm sorry you don't have them earlier.
Okay.
Uh, Alexi Kohan, who should be familiar to most of you, she has been, since two thousand eleven, one of our two student news anchors.
Okay.
Um, she is going to study Broadcast Communications
Mm-hmm.
at Hofstra University.
Wow.
Um, she is a very accomplished young lady, has done a terrific job, um, and I think it would, it would be a great fit. We did solicit, uh, interest from
Oh, you did?
students, yeah. Um, through our fall intern had been, um, Jamie.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from Northeastern University.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was one young man who was interested, but it would require him to abide in Western Massachusetts, which he doesn't do, and so
Okay.
it, it was impossible for him.
Okay.
So.
So this is who you have?
This is just something that you can think about and we can take it up at another meeting, but I just wanted you to, I wanted to get it in and get you the information.
Okay. Well, let, let me ask, um, take, Paul, not to put anybody on the spot, do you have any reservations? Do we need to, to bring this to the next meeting or
No, I don't know.
are you comfortable moving on it tonight?
I, I move on it tonight, yeah.
Okay, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept Lexi, uh, Kohan, um, as the intern.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, second, uh, is there any discussion?
No.
Anything you wanna say?
Thank you very much.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She'll be starting right away.
She'll be starting right away on?
Uh, I would say after graduation.
After graduation.
She's working as it is now because she, they're doing the news.
Okay.
But, um, once she graduates, she will be, uh, she'll be officially the intern. Thank you.
And after college, when she's famous and on TV, tell her to come back to see us.
She will be on TV. She will be famous.
Thank you.
We'll see her on CNN someday.
Okay. All right.
Hey, no comments, man.
So, right, so we got through that, okay? That was the intern, okay, moving right along. All right, on, oh, notice from Charter and Comcast, uh, the divestitures. Um, Nick, did you wanna give an overview of that and we can come back, we can?
Sure, I think the, the, if, if it pleases the board.
Just for the public, yeah.
If it pleases the board, um, the town has received notice that, um, due to the pending, uh, deal between Comcast and Time Warner, as part of it, there's going to be a divestiture of Charter's, um, property, uh, communities, um, and it looks like East Long Meadow will become a Comcast community sometime in the very, uh, near future.
Okay.
And so that's the short of it.
Okay, all right. Um, can we have those notices available if just in case somebody wants, or can we, can we post it on our website?
Um, could it?
I'm just asking.
Could attempt to.
Can attempt to?
Yeah.
Or can we have some notices available if somebody wanted to come up and get a copy of it?
Absolutely, if somebody made a request, we, we have them available.
Okay. So come get a copy, um, Nick, bro, we'll, um, make it so that you can have it, and it's wonderful reading, it really is. Okay, uh, notice of reorganizations of the, uh, Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, and the Board of Public Works is in your packet. Um, there's a citation, um, for Eagle Scout Michael N. Kane. The ceremony is Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand fourteen, at the First Congregational Church. Now, do we need to do anything with regards to that? I think that's wonderful, we, that we have it, an Eagle Scout. I know they work very hard to get, to
Yeah.
to obtain it.
Through the board, are we writing a letter or?
We have
I think there's probably a
We've got the citation in there to sign, huh?
To just assign, okay.
I, I'd like to go to that and hand carry it down if I could.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
We'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say, actually, just it's Tuesday, June tenth.
It doesn't have a time.
Yeah, we can get that for you.
Well, I had a pla- I, I had planned to attend too, so, but we can, we can, well, if you're available, you can go to.
It would depend, unfortunately, it would depend on what time that is because that is a night for a Board of Selectment meeting.
Did you do that on purpose?
Didn't do any such thing.
Okay, well, can we, can we find out what time it is and if it, uh, all available, we would, we'll, we'll make it, try to make it work.
If I may make a suggestion, and this may sound wacky, but
You?
If, if, yeah, there you go. If the dinner's at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could have him come in here at six, at the beginning of our meeting?
That would be wonderful.
And take pictures and?
Yeah, it'd be good.
That'd be wonderful.